Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Bomke.
Here.
Mr. Cavalier.
Here.
Mr. Cohen.
Here.
Mr. Dudenheffer.
Here.
Mrs. Mauer.
Here.
Ms. Shelton.
Here.
Mr. Snellings.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Giles. My name is Meg Bomke. I represent the Falmouth District and serve as the Chairman of the Board of Supervisors. I would like to recognize the Stafford Sheriff's Office for receiving a first-place award in the 2018 Law Enforcement Challenge by the Virginia Association Chiefs of Police for the Best Traffic Safety Programs in the State for the 2017 calendar year. The Sheriff's Office was awarded first place in the category for the Sheriff's Office with 151 or more deputies. Judges awarded points to the agencies in six areas that comprise a comprehensive traffic safety program, problem identification, policies, planning, training of officers, public information and education, enforcement, and an evaluation of the outcomes of the agency's efforts. Sheriff deputies said, "We are honored to be selected for the first-place award in this category. It is a testament to the strength of our traffic safety programs and to the diligent and unwavering efforts of our deputies to keep the community safe." Congratulations to Sheriff Decatur and to all Stafford County law enforcement personnel. And I see Sheriff Decatur back there. Thank you very much and congratulations.[98.11][98.11][applause] The month of September has been designated as Pain Awareness Month. This was established in 2001 by a coalition of groups and organizations with the goal of raising awareness and educating caregivers, health care professionals, and the community about the available treatments, both alternative and mainstream, that may complement existing care for a more holistic approach to pain management. The first order of business is approval of the meeting agenda. There are no additions or deletions to the agenda. May I have a motion?
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes unanimously. Now we have presentations by the public. If you would like to comment, please remain courteous and respectful to members of the audience and to the board. It's important to keep track of your time at the podium so that everyone who wishes to speak has an opportunity to do so. If you are here to speak about one of the evening's public hearings, of which we only have one, please hold those comments until the seven o'clock session. Each speaker is allowed three minutes. Speak slowly and clearly into the microphone and begin by stating your name and address. Please refer to the light on the microphone, I mean, the light on the podium to monitor your time. Green indicates the start of your remarks. Yellow indicates you have one minute to summarize your comments, and red means that your time is up. So let's see. I do have two speaker cards, and the first one I have is Philip Herbert.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Philip Herbert. I am the President of the Leland Station Community Association Board of Directors, having taken a position in November when the association assumed the resident-run association. In September of 2017, we began discussions with regard to adopting Sections 1556 of the Stafford Code with regard to restricted parking in our neighborhood. And I wanted to dispel some of the, I think, some of the negative comments that Ms. Bomke received about our transparency and its process. We began those discussions in September the 5th, 2017, on our regular board meeting. These are public meetings that our residents are invited and encouraged to attend. We had discussions after that in October, November, again, in late November at our annual meeting, again in December when we adopted, moved to adopt the provision and petitioned the county to initiate this process to undergo restricted parking. Our declaration was accepted by Stafford County in March of 2000, and our declaration outlines in Section 8.2 restrictions on use, limiting certain parking of commercial vehicles, watercraft, recreational vehicles, and such and so forth. And we adopted this in order to have another tool in our toolbox. Our enforcement procedures do not allow us just to simply go out and remove cars and tow cars and find people. We have a very liberal policy with regard to it. The addition of this, and again, all the discussions and public comment that we had put out, again, all listed in our minutes. Anybody could have accessed those minutes and spoke to us with regard to any negative comment that they had. Nobody spoke up, and we moved forward and adopted it. I actually signed the document in January, and it came before your board. I believe it was presented in February. And then we had further discussions in February with regard that it was presented. So I would argue and dispute that there is no transparency in this process. We've had public meetings. We invited public comment and got none. I would ask you to seriously consider our petition. I think we've presented it as eloquently as we could, and if there's any questions that I could answer, I'd be more than happy to do so.
Unfortunately, we can't have you take questions.
Okay.
But thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
All right. The next speaker is Philip, or not Philip Herbert, Elaine Callender.
Elaine Callender, 622 Lancaster Street. I've been known to wear a number of different hats in the community, but today I'm here representing Virginia Organizing, a nonpartisan organization dedicated to empowering people in local communities to address issues that affect the quality of their lives. Clearly, affordable housing is one such issue. I'm here today to thank you for your serious study of the affordable housing crisis and your interest in taking steps to alleviate it. Virginia Organizing supports the establishment of a housing authority. By being able to provide extra funding, acquire and redevelop blighted lands, as well as acquire statewide and federal funding, the housing authority would increase the ability of Stafford County government to assist employed residents who are struggling to keep up with the cost of housing and the elderly and disabled on fixed incomes. On a personal level, I know people struggling to find and retain rental housing. They are sleeping on friends' couches, or in cars, or in tents. They also struggle to afford transportation. I think back to when my husband and I prepared to marry over 40 years ago. We were both living with our families at the time in northern Virginia with rent-free housing. So we started the apartment search. It never occurred to us that we would not be able to find a nice, affordable apartment, and we did, no problem, on our modest wages that were little over minimum wage. We were also able to pay insurance on two cars, and fortunately, we had full health benefits at work. The struggles today are real and impact a cross-section of our citizens, including those of us who own our own homes and provide an extra bedroom or a living room couch for someone in need of a place to sleep. If I could afford to buy a big boarding house, I just might, but I can't. I and others can, however, make a donation to an affordable housing cause or pay a little extra in county taxes to support an affordable housing initiative. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Callender. Would anyone else like to address the board on any other matters? Please come forward.
Yeah, my name is Arthur LaSanti. I live at Leland Station. The gentleman spoke first. My issue with this restricted parking, I'm wanting to know, did the county at any time do a survey of what they're saying their violations are? And if so, how many were there, or were they isolated? And I know that I attended one of those meetings, and my son drives a commercial vehicle. It's the size of an SUV, small one. He had parked in my yard for 18 months and never a word said to us. An incident took place four doors up from me, and I think that the board, the station, Leland Station, was justified in what they were trying to do. But I've never had anybody come to me and say anything, then I get a citation. And I was told, I'm not going to say the person's name, of the Board of Supervisors there, that, hey, look it, park your vehicle in the street. It's state-maintained. There's not a thing they can do to you. And consequently, my son has parked on the street. One of the board members did vote in favor of my son parking in my driveway because he was hidden by eight trees that my neighbor has. And consequently, now he parks on the street, and they said, well, look it, now we can see the vehicle where, now where at first we couldn't, unless you drive by my house, because I live towards the end of a cul-de-sac. And I'm just wanting to know, has the board done a survey themselves to find out how many violations? I mean, I drive through there quite a bit, and I don't see any vehicles other than my son's. And if the board is going to adopt this program, who is going to pay for all the new signage that you have to do? Is that going to be part of Leland Station? Are they going to offer, or is this going to have to be taken on by the state? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else in the board chambers like to address the board? If so, please come forward. All right. With that, I'll close the public comment period. Next, reports of board members. And please remember to pull any items from the consent agenda if you would like to do so. Oh.
Excuse me. You have a question?
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry. This is my first time, and I didn't understand. So...
No worries. Just state your name and your address, and then you have three minutes to make your presentation.
My name is Teresa Bangard. I live at 5 Sevier Street. It's located in Vista Woods.
Okay.
Okay, so my concerns are that my house was built where a pond used to be. So the pond was drained, the house was erected, and as they were erecting the house, they drained the basement. They were pumping water out of the basement. The property still wants to be a pond. We are the fourth owners, and we've stayed the longest. The previous owners have stayed a minimum of three years and a maximum of five years. One family foreclosed. Another family, we're both veterans, so I think they were pretty strong people. But when the basement flooded to seven feet, they decided they needed to get out of there at all cost to whoever. And so even though we knew there was a disclosure about a flooding having occurred in 2003, we thought it was kind of a random thing. We did not realize that this house had been flooding since it had been built, forcing each owner out. We've lived there for 13 years, and we have really made every effort to try to make it our home. I've put in a lot of crepe myrtle trees, pear trees, peach trees, plum trees. A lot of them have died because of the conditions of the land. I've put flowers in, I've put bushes, and I've put pathways, and I've tried, and I'm failing. This year alone, we flooded four times. My basement flooded six feet. I don't know how much longer I can go on. The drains are too small to handle the nine waterways that make their way to my property. So basically, my property is an easement for all of my neighbors, nine waterways. So my question for the board is, is there another property in Stafford that manages nine waterways for everyone else, or are we the only ones? And if there is, how do they manage? What do they do? My house is filthy. It's like a cesspool. I clean on the side, and I've had my customers tell me, "I'm the best," because I'm very meticulous and particular. But if you go to my house, it's a disaster. It's shameful. My kids don't even want to bring their friends over. So that's my question. How do we continue to live like this? We're not lazy people. I work. I've worked two and three jobs ever since I've come here. My husband works. We're honest, and so those are my two questions. Who else has a similar situation, and how much more should we be asked to handle? That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else in the board chambers like to address the board?
Hi. I wasn't expecting to. I thought it was later tonight. Hi. Button?
They'll turn it on for you.
Gotcha. My name is Teresa Onan. I live at 69 Vista Woods Road. I've spoken before this board before, when my house flooded in 2003. As a result of that, and some other flooding in other parts of the county, a report was done, that was completed in October of 2005, that in tell this year I was not informed of. And there were a lot of things that were on that report that could have helped me and my family possibly not flood twice this year. My home sits on a stormwater easement, and a lot of water, most of the water, is coming off of Spring Lake Farms, and it comes down behind my house, and then it hits the ditch that runs alongside of it, and then it travels another mile before it can stop in the pond at Vista Woods Road. We do not have a homeowners' association. Apparently, based on the response we're getting from other people in the neighborhood, they don't really want one. I'm sure they'd be more than happy to turn that pond over to Stafford County, and if you maintain it, they'll be more than happy to let you run what you want in there. The issue that I have is that Vista Woods has always had a drainage problem. I've lived in Stafford all my life. I've watched a very nice rural area be torn apart and just cluster developments. And you cannot rerun natural waterways and expect them to just follow the path, and there is nowhere for this water to go. The trees are not absorbing it anymore because they're gone, okay? The problem that I have, and Wendy, I thank you for this, she's made a great effort to try to get some of the horrific pipes replaced in that neighborhood. However, it appears that VDOT is not responding to what the needs are, and they're just replacing those pipes with what was already there, and it's not helping. My particular property has a 43-inch pipe that goes underneath of Vista Woods, and so it's very large. I wish I'd known I was speaking. I have photos for you guys showing my backyard with a 40-foot waterway, about five feet deep, and that's just the water coming off of there. That's not the water in front of my house. My house becomes, I won't even say with a moat around it, because I store anywhere between four to three foot of water in my lower level every time it storms like that. This is the third time my house has been completely wiped out. Every one of my children have been traumatized. What I'd like to say to the board is, this is just not property damage. This destroys families, lives, your whole future. Our intent was to sell that property, pay off my mom's mortgage, and then buy some property up the mountain. We can't do that now. We cannot, in good conscience, sell this property to another family, because it comes in with such force, it can kill you. And that's really what I want to say. Please, you know, Stafford, please, just ask, can you help us? It's all over the county. It's not just Vista Woods, but Vista Woods is a big problem. And I recognize that, but I feel really bad, because when that microburst hit South Stafford last two weeks, three weeks ago, I was just really glad it wasn't us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to address the board? Okay. Seeing none, I'll now bring this back to the board for board member reports.
Mr. Dudenheffer.
Thank you, Cheryl. Last week, I attended the Joint Schools Committee that was created when I was off the board, and I got to tell you, I was not overly impressed with the quality of the work that I think's going to be done with that group. But the one issue that bothered me the most is that we have, and we are working on, a joint schools capital improvement plan process, and we're dealing with capital improvements, and there isn't a single mention of any transportation issues in that capital improvement plan. And the discussion that followed, when I brought that comment up, showed me that there's really, there probably isn't going to be anything done with transportation in this county, and that certainly, it isn't going to be taken very serious. As I've stated, when I voted against the budget and the county CIP process, I personally cannot participate in a group or a process that at least doesn't try to address some of the biggest problems that affect the county. So I'm going to resign from that committee and let someone who thinks that it can accomplish something to really do that. I know that sounds like I'm backing out, but it's a way of trying to deal myself with the lack of forward movement that's going to happen in this county on transportation. At some point, we'll run into a roadblock. Soon as the transportation projects that are out there right now are completed, that's it. There are no others. So the ones you work on today are the ones that'll be done five, 10 years from now, and we're not doing that. We have a study group working, and we've got some other odds and ends, but certainly the discussion at that meeting showed me that there's a lack of understanding of what it takes to do road projects, and I think it's better, and even at the suggestion of one of the school board members, that since I don't agree with what they're doing, that I shouldn't participate. So I am formally announcing, Ms. Bomke, that we need to find someone else to go participate in that organization.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Dudenheffer.
Thank you. That's all I've got.
Mrs. Mauer.
Yes, a couple of things. First, I want to welcome the residents from Vista Woods. I completely and totally, it's, I'm at a loss for words for what you're enduring right now. And we're working with VDOT to at least get some of the culverts replaced and doing what we can, but that goes into, we had a community meeting with Vista Woods on the 22nd, and a lot of options were discussed, and one of those items you'll see on the agenda, we want to talk about some options that the county might have with stormwater management. This is becoming a larger and larger problem, and these losses are devastating. These are people's homes. It's their kids' pictures. It's probably, sometimes their retirement, because their largest investment that they'll make is that investment in their home. So looking forward to the discussion that we'll be having on item number 25 on the agenda. In addition to that, I want to welcome, on a happier note, all the kids back into school as the only sitting board member right now, with actual children in school, and my daughter, my daughter is entering her senior year, so I will be empty-nesting it next year, and I want to say I'm sad, but I'm so excited for her. And so with the exception of Tom, who has, what, 200 children, as a school teacher?[1467.01][1467.01][laughing]
Thank you for putting that in.
I want to welcome all the kids back to school. Today is an exciting day. It's an exciting day for me as a parent, getting those kids out of the house and back into the classroom. But I also want to caution everybody that this is also a very dangerous time, because we spent all summer not minding buses and kids walking to school, and so please, please be vigilant, be careful, and watch for those kids as we go into a new battle rhythm, as they would say. Also wanted to talk about the CEDC meeting. We had the Community and Economic Development Committee meeting today. There are four items that were proposed. One is for property line setback on PD-2, the allowance for retirement housing in B-3, changing to the street name process, and proposed amendments to the Design and Construction Standards Manual for Landscaping. All of these items have been recommended to go to the Planning Commission for Public Hearing, so we should be hearing more about that soon, and that should be on our consent agenda for our next meeting. Also, Madam Chair, I would like to pull Items 5 and 6 from the consent agenda, and that concludes my remarks.
Thank you.
Ms. Shelton?
I'd like to defer my comments. Thank you. We have a lot to discuss today.
Mr. Snellings.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I usually defer comments, but some of you may know I do a lot of these 5K walks, runs, I do the walking. I won first place [applause] in my age group.[1573.01][1573.01][applause] I was there.[1575.01][1575.01][applause] Thank you, my...
Congratulations, Mr. Snellings. Mr. Cavalier.
Thank you, Cheryl. I'm happy to announce that we finally have a traffic signal installed at the crucifix at the intersection of Route 1 and Telegraph Road. It's only taken me, I first asked for this my first year on the board back in 2000, so it's been 18 years to get VDOT to actually put in a light there, and I, you know, I've received overwhelming support on that particular project. That's going to stay in place until the approved smart-scale project will move that light in that intersection to the north, a little ways, somewhere between the crucifix and Woodstock Lane for the permanent solution. So it is a big safety improvement for anyone, particularly those turning left from Telegraph Road onto US-1. At that point, there's been many accidents, and the sheriff helped me document that, and I appreciate that, and providing that input to VDOT to help them see the light on this and actually put that light in. So the school buses, particularly with the first day of school here, are really impacted because there's two schools on Telegraph Road in that vicinity, Wide Water Elementary School and Shirley High Middle School. Both of those, the students who rode those buses that needed to go south on US-1 had to go all the way up to Boswell's Corner at the intersection there on Route 1, and then get into heavy traffic on many evening rush hours, especially Thursdays and Fridays, and it took them an extra 45 minutes to get home. Plus, it just was darn dangerous. And so I'm very, very happy to get that light in. And I went to back-to-school nights at Brookpoint High School, Shirley High Middle School, as well as Moncur Elementary School, for the very last time at the old Moncur Elementary School. And I was happy to meet the new school protection officer there that the sheriff has so kindly provided to the schools. There's one at Moncur and one at Hartwood, with one still to be named later at a particular school. And so those will help ensure that it's a pilot program for the elementary schools, because we have school protection officers, school resource officers in all middle and high schools. So this will ensure a little bit more safety at the elementary school level. So again, Sheriff Decatur, thank you for expediting that program. That actually worked in an amazingly short amount of time. I went to the school board right after the Parkland shooting and cut some grief for going there, but, you know, in the end, it worked, and so I'll trade the grief for the results anytime. I also just wanted to say that, particularly with that light at Telegraph, most of the feedback that I got were from people in my district, Wide Water, as well as those in the acquired district, because all of those... the acquired district, 'cause all those people have to turn left on the light. So, you know, yeah, maybe there's an extra bit of a slowdown on some of the evening rush hours. I haven't experienced that, 'cause I don't have to go north to work anymore. So I'm sure there's, there's can be some work by VDOT on the traffic signal work there to allow that to more expediently go through. But in the end, it's about safety first, and this does the job, and I'm very happy that this went through in time for the school year. Thank you.
Mr. Cohen.
Thank you, Ms. Giles. It is back-to-school time, and Ms. Maurer took all my fun comments about back-to-school time, so I'll just say make sure you check your computers and your synergy to find out what's going on in the school system and your child's grades. I attended an HOA meeting pertaining to, no surprise here, stormwater management, and to me, that is a massive issue that I'm glad we're addressing by talking about it today. And I understand and have great empathy for the people who spoke, because this is something that the state has fallen down on, and we need to step up on. Going back to schools, I just wanna give a great amount of praise to Sheriff Decatur and his team for the active shooter training they gave to all school employees this summer. It was an excellent program. It was very thought-provoking, and I think that it has the result that they wanted it to have. And I thank you for going to that extra mile on doing that. On a happy side, I did attend a joint three-on-three meeting. Was rather pleased by it. Mr. McCosker was voted as one of the co-chairs. He is the school board member from the George Washington District, and I was voted as the other co-chair. We had a very good discussion about shared services, which this board has made a large priority, and there was some consternation on the other side of the street about, but everybody's on the same page on that and moving forward with that, which is excellent news. We talked about the CIP, which is coming up today. We also discussed the VPSA financing, which is also on today's agenda. We talked about the budget calendar, and we sort of set a path forward to deal with things. And remember that one of the major focuses of this body, of the joint three-on-three, is to have that open and forthright communication between the two boards. And I think we are marching towards that in a very strong and positive way. With that in mind, the fire chief and I keep working with the schools to try to reinstitute the fire training class in our school system, which so many of the volunteers and paid members of our fire and rescue department cite as one of the best things that the county has done as far as recruiting. And so he and I are dedicated to making that happen, as are many of the school personnel. Lastly, this weekend, I wanna give a shout-out to Yankees in Falmouth, which is a tremendous event that we do. It's Saturday and Sunday. Saturday, September 8th from 9:00 to 6:00. Sunday, it's 10:00 to 3:00. Come down. It is a wide swath of the history of Stafford, not just particularly about the war, but culture and the history for a long part of it, because our history goes very, very far back, and we continue to be making it each and every day. So I thank you, and that concludes my report.
Ms. Baumke.
Yes, thank you. I wanna mention that Delegate Bob Thomas and I will be holding a town hall meeting on September 12th at Conway Elementary School at 7:00. So everybody from the public is welcome to attend. Also, I'm disappointed that Mr. Dudenheffer is not interested in the joint schools meeting anymore, but I understand. And I just wanna say then, on item five of our budget calendar today, you know, we will be talking about transportation and the review of all of our transportation projects, but I understand that that is not a, the highest priority of the joint schools working group. I believe that that group has been working very well together. We have streamlined and changed some things over the last, really, two months to make that committee work a lot more effectively. Some of you might remember that the way that items used to get on that agenda is everybody would send their agenda ideas into each clerk of the board, and then an agenda would be created from there. And I think we all agreed that that was maybe not the best way to do it, but it created a lot of angst for staff, because then they had to figure out what each board wanted to discuss at the meeting. So now, we are actually working with the county administrator, the chair and vice-chair from each board, and the chair and vice-chair from our board, to create that agenda for the joint schools meeting. So I believe it's gonna be a lot more streamlined, and so I don't believe that transportation is the right venue for that particular meeting. Transportation is very important to the county, but I don't think that's a discussion item for the joint schools. We will then, at some point, appoint another board member from this board to the joint schools working group. Let's see, the only, I think that's all I have. So with that, do we have a report from our county attorney, Ms. McLendon?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I have no report at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Foley.
Yes, Madam Chair. We have two items to discuss today, the construction report and what is intended to be the final report of the fire rescue assessment from Chief Cardello. And our first item is the construction report.
Thank you.
Well, Madam Chairman, we'll start with our chief.
Okay. Chief Cardello, you're on.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, board members. I brought a very special guest with me today. You've heard us talk for a very long time about the volunteer coordinator. Here she is, Sasha Meek.
Great.
And I'll just let her introduce herself.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Madi Sasha Meek. I've been in Stafford County a few months now, just moved here from Austria. Most of my work experience is human resources and human services with the Marine Corps, specifically family readiness. So a lot of volunteer recruitment and retention experience.
Great. Well, welcome to Stafford County and to Fire and Rescue. Does anybody have any questions for her?
The weather's like Austria, huh? I miss Austria, but Stafford is growing on me and my children, so we like it so far.
Great. Well, welcome.
Thank you so much.
You'll be in good hands over there with Chief Cardello and the rest of the Fire and Rescue staff.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you. So as all of you know, in early 2017, a Fire and Rescue assessment was completed for Stafford County, and the assessment took a comprehensive look at our administrative and operational aspects, and it produced 57 recommendations for improvement. A Fire and Rescue Assessment Review Work Group was formed, and that was made up of career and volunteer personnel, and they took a hard look at the assessment, and they developed a plan to address each one of the 57 different items that were recommended for improvement. And I'm happy to report that at this time, all 57 of those items are, have either been fully addressed or are in the process of being implemented. The recommendations of the assessment were organized into five themes. Theme one was organizational development. An overriding concern in this theme was the lack of direction, or vision, or purpose throughout our department. Staff is currently working on solidifying a strategic planning session for our department so that we can develop our own strategic plan. A strategic plan for our fire department in this day and age is a norm, and I think it would really benefit us to have one, and we're going to have one sometime after the first of the year. A strategic plan will help us by, it will help us plan for the future by setting goals and expectations for all that we do. A policy review committee was formed, and it will continue to meet to review all of the policies in our department to, in an effort to ensure that they're relevant and they're current. We still have some policies on the books from 2005, so any redundant policies are going to be either consolidated or eliminated. The vacant operations assistant chief position is currently being announced. We hope to have someone in place in October. Community risk reduction was a key concern across several themes, but especially the theme number one, organizational development. We've initiated a very aggressive community risk reduction process, and it's already paid dividends for us. Dedicated life, dedicated fire and life safety educator position, which is standard across the region, and in really all modern fire departments, is really needed to give this concern of community risk reduction, it's the attention that it deserves.
Chief Cardello?
Yes.
On that one, could you go back? Can you give us some examples of the results that we've already seen with CRR?
Community risk reduction? Yes, ma'am. We have checked hundreds of smoke alarms in the county after significant incidents recently, and over the last few months, and we've changed, we found many smoke alarms that were more than 20 years old. We've replaced those. We've replaced dozens of batteries. We identified a hearing-impaired resident who we had to, we worked with our fire marshal's office to find a strobe light activated smoke alarm so that he could, I mean, obviously a regular smoke alarm wouldn't, wasn't going to do him any good. So we've done that. We've talked to groups of senior citizens about carbon monoxide issues after an incident. We have talked to camp, children's camps about calling 911 and just basic fire safety. So we were out there quite a bit, and we've done a lot, and I'm proud of what we've done, and I think it's going to be the norm for the future.
Great. Thank you.
Theme number two was communications. The assessment identified that there was a general overall lack of communications throughout the department, but especially from the leadership down. Career and volunteer personnel both expressed frustration with not knowing what was going on in the department. We started a recurring monthly staff meeting where all command staff and volunteer chiefs can discuss issues that are affecting them. And the meeting also serves as a general information session. Starting, I hope this week, we'll have the new newsletter out. It's reworked, and it's, it's gonna come out on a monthly basis. It's gonna have input from every division in the department, as well as the Fire and Rescue Association. Theme number three was training. The assessment identified the need to review training standards for both career and volunteer personnel, and a training standards committee was formed, and it has met, and progress has been made in this area. They will continue to meet on a regular basis to discuss uniform training standards and needs. The marketing of training to volunteers, streamlining the onboarding process of volunteers, and training schedules that are conducive to our volunteer schedules, that was identified as a pretty big issue, and that's what our volunteer coordinator is going to be tasked with. She's gonna take that head-on. The assessment also recommended that we implement a candidate physical ability test prior to hiring anyone. The candidate physical ability test, or CPAT, that is a national standard, and that, we have ordered equipment, we purchased and ordered equipment, and it's started to arrive, and it will become part of our hiring process from this point forward. We will also incorporate that into our volunteer onboarding process. The poor physical condition of our training center was also identified by career, yes, ma'am?
Hi, Chief. Just, so one of the things that happened before you arrived was they made some adjustments to the training, rolled it out really quickly towards our volunteers, and the rollout plan was essentially gonna kind of cut about 75% of our volunteers from the rolls. So if we, just be mindful. That's all I'm asking.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
The condition of our county training facility was identified as a major area of concern, and it was given a very high priority by the assessment. We've begun the process of exploring alternatives, sites within the county to build a new training center. There's still an opportunity to collaborate with our regional partners, but the need will always exist for Stafford County Fire and Rescue to have a standalone training center. Theme number four, budget, capital improvement, and administration. The assessment recommended that we restructure the way we fund volunteer companies, and we've done that. It's been well documented with the support of the Fire and Rescue Association. The condition of our fire and rescue stations was another major concern of the assessment. The countywide facility assessment was recently completed, and we hope to have the results soon, and that will provide a list of prioritized recommendations for capital improvements to our stations. Theme number five was delivery and services. The assessment identified the need for increasing the number of basic life support transport, transport units. There are two ways to accomplish this. The first one is we need to support our volunteers through the onboarding process to ensure that members who are EMT-trained are able to provide service sooner. That is another area where the volunteer coordinator is going to come in very handy. And with the increase in service, we are gradually going to have to increase our career staffing complement to meet the service demand. We are in planning process right now of putting an additional BLS unit in service sometime at the end of this year with existing staff. Another recommendation was that we provide more logistical support to the fire and EMS and life safety program. We've hired a part-time temporary logistician to assist with these efforts. We are also in the planning process of hiring a fire and life safety educator who will oversee all public education and community risk reduction efforts and programs. That's schools, public requests for demonstrations and information, smoke alarms, et cetera. This position's critical to our community risk reduction and engagement efforts. It's also an industry standard, and we've identified Virginia Department of Fire Program's money to help pay for the cost of the position. In the assessment, it was also noted that our ground ladders, hose, and fire pumps were lacking annual testing. What we found was they were being tested, we just didn't have one central place that they were being documented. So we've created a central location where that information can be found, so that takes care of that.
Is that information reviewed by the state?
Some, some of the information is reviewed by the state. We're required to keep some of it on our personnel. The equipment we keep for document, the documentation for annual replacement cycles, and there are some state requirements with fire pumps, so, but we have one place to look for it now.
Okay. Thank you.
And as Mr. Cohen said, the reinstituting the high school fire program was given a very high priority by the assessment. We've been work, having conversations with Stafford County Public Schools about being able to start the program in the fall of 2019. I'm very optimistic that we can get that done. Talks are ongoing, and this program is so important, as Mr. Cohen and many others have said, this program is very important to our volunteer recruiting efforts and to our, also to our career recruiting efforts. So at this point, I'm confident in saying that each of the recommendations from the Fire and Rescue assessment have either been fully addressed or in, are in the process of being implemented. I'm proud of the work that our volunteer and career personnel have put in for coming together and trying to make Stafford County Fire and Rescue a better place. Thanks.
Great. Does anybody have any questions for Chief Cardello? Great. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay, are we ready for Mr. Counsel?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Brian Counsel, Deputy Director of Public Works. I apologize for that delay earlier. I do have an update for, for a number of projects going on in the county now of significant priority. The first one would be the fire station number 14 on Shelton Shop Road. If you've been by there, you've seen a lot of activity since the rain has decided to cease for a while. We've got the perimeter block foundation completed, a lot of plumbing and electrical have begun, and some of the foundations or the slab, the slab floor has been poured. The project, the construction is, is on schedule. We're considering some change orders now for a potential change order for some of the weather impacts. The contractor is doing some schedule manipulation now to try to avoid any necessary time extensions, but I feel one may be necessary, probably in the, in the range of about 10 or 15 days. But we're gonna do other things to try to mitigate those where we don't have to extend the contract. Mountain View Road and Poplar Road, there's a project that we advertised a little while ago that was gonna take out some of the severity of that curve through there. The numbers we received during bids were not within our budget, and we're gonna make some changes, and we're gonna re-advertise that in the fall. We'll still implement all the project objectives, but hope for shoot for a little more competitive bidding climate and a lower construction cost. and a lower construction cost. Brook Road Safety Improvements, you've seen all the clearing and some of the work, the NS work there. The next phase of this is a little more continued clearing and early grading, but that road is going to close between the bridge, near the bridge and near the top of the hill at Stagecoach for the next little over a year, year and four months or so, while they do a lot of the road unimpacted by traffic. This was one of the cost-saving measures that was implemented back when the project originally bid and the construction costs came in quite a bit more than we had hoped. So this is one of the things that we did to reduce those costs. That is coming up, there are two residents in that closed stretch, they'll have complete access all the time as well as fire and rescue and emergency vehicles as well. The Garrisonville Road, we've been talking about that for a while now, it's completed, all the work is completed, they're in punch list. The pond, that was the last element of work, is complete. VDOT has met out there with us on two or three occasions, our punch list work is going well and that should completely close out soon. Soon as that happens, we can look into the light issues at Center Street and start implementing those changes, which I think were brought up by the board a couple of months ago and those were, VDOT doesn't see an issue with that, it's just slower to wait for the end of the project to try to implement them now. Route one in Courthouse Road, we're still in the property acquisition phase, we've met with most, most all property owners, that's going smoothly. It's one of the most time-consuming parts of the project, but it's on schedule and hope to get that going on schedule per the capital improvement program. Phase four of the Ferry Farm Trail, talked about that a little bit in infrastructure committee, you've seen some of the work. Several of the drainage facilities have been put in and some of the trail itself has been constructed with some of the base stone. We're waiting on, for a lot of the rest of the trail, we're waiting on a major fiber line to be relocated so we can keep the construction going for the trail. Phase six of the Belmont Trail, I guess it's going to be called, the board heard some options in the infrastructure committee and we'll be coming back to you as progress occurs on the suggestions by staff and recommendations from the board and be happy to take any of your questions.
Any questions for Mr. Counsel on the construction report? Mr. Cohen?
I just have a quick question because is the Brook Road closed for over a year or just from now till January?
January of 19.
Right.
Oh, I'm, yes, just four months, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
That's correct. I apologize for that.
I was mighty scared there.
I'm still sometimes in 17, I apologize, yes.
Thank you.
Yes, sorry.
Okay, all right, great, thank you very much. Okay, anything else, Mr. Foley?
No, Madam Chair, I mean, I can briefly address some concerns expressed about the agenda materials being available this morning. Just wanted you to know that the new application that we put in place is, I'm trying to get my terminology right because I'm not an IT expert, but that application is hosted by Microsoft and available for all of our citizens, but Microsoft had a major failure that affected a large part of the country this morning and that is still down. In the meantime, we have put our agenda materials up like we always have in the past, so they've been available since 10:30 this morning, even though around 8:30 there was that system failure. So just wanted the public to know that those, that information was available throughout the weekend and it wasn't until this morning that it was unavailable. I think the larger issue for the board is we have a new system that we're implementing and I don't think we handled that as well with the board as we needed to, so we are going to go back to the old system in terms of what you see. This new system though has significantly improved our process internally, saved us time and money, so we're going to continue to use it internally, easily convert it over to what you're used to seeing and then we'll get with you all individually to see your preferences on that. We'll go over the new system with you and give you the opportunity to do whichever way you'd like to do it going forward. I know a lot of you use the I annotate to make, mark up your board packet, we're going to make sure that you're able to do that one way or the other as we go forward, but we will bring about some improvements in how we bring you into that process and roll it out before we do anything more with the system. So just a brief update, I sent you an email to that effect as well.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Foley? Okay, great, thank you. All right, with that, the consent agenda, do I have a motion for the consent agenda?
So.
Minus, right, minus five and six, that's correct. Okay, I have a motion and a second, minus items five and six, cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes unanimously, Ms. Mauer, item five.
All right. Madam Chair, there's just a few revisions on this. First, I want to note on page two of this particular item, which is the budget and the annual budget calendar and the CIP process. On October 16th, 2018, it's proposed that the TRC meeting will review all transportation projects. So while I wholly respect Mr. Dudenheffer, my concern is, is that there is a transportation project review as an element of our CIP process and, because that is important to all of us on this board and, but it is part of the CIP process. However, my main reason for pulling this is on Thursday, November 15th of 2018, there is included a review of program capacity that's been adopted by the school board. Originally, before this year, we used to do capacity numbers based upon design capacity. It was brought up this year to consider program capacity because of the preschools and all of the debate was centered around when you only have four kids in a classroom, that's significantly different than 24 kids, and so it made sense to go to program capacity. However, when they changed the program capacity, it was almost like they threw in all the cats, dogs in the kitchen sink in the methodology, which this board has requested on multiple occasions and has yet to receive, the actual methodology for calculating program capacity. Am I correct on that, Mr. Foley?
We have a version of it that I think needs more information and is also under review as we speak, so it's a constantly changing standard.
Okay, so if this board is considering purchasing Fredericksburg Christian School, which is later on in here, that takes out that whole element of program capacity versus design capacity and just for the ease of the public, for this board, for the school board, which there was a giant brouhaha over program capacity over the summertime, which I do not want to get involved in, I recommend that we go back to design capacity, since the largest element that went into program capacity is being taken off the table with the purchase of Fredericksburg Christian School. So I would like to motion to approve this particular resolution, thus eliminating and review of program capacity that has been adopted by the school board.
Okay.
I need a second.
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion and a second for R 18-211. Is there any discussion?
I think the county administrator, that's why I was waiting the same, because he kept looking like he wanted to say.
Madam Chair, I would just say that staff actually agrees with that and we've had some discussions even at the committee level. We were just going to bring that forward at a later time, but I think this is appropriate. It sets the tone for what we will bring forward to you in the future.
Okay, Ms. Shelton?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Mauer, for bringing this forward. Design capacity, design capacity frankly is what the Commonwealth does, so I don't know why we have to be different. And I would say, I really want to thank the school board members for trying to look at that dynamic criteria and try to figure out a way to do that. And I really think that, I mean, when you have data that is that dynamic, you can't do regression analysis on it, there's no way that you can actually predict what that's going to be. So from a CIP perspective, for the, what we're looking at, how we're going to spend the money, it only makes sense that we would use design capacity, so that's why I'm supporting this motion.
Mr. Cohen?
Just very quickly, I think I have a long history of dealing with the CIP, both on this side of the street and the other side of the street, as well as enrollments and capacities and I just think that making it in line with what the Commonwealth says is more productive and more transparent and I think it'll help the system as we move forward.
All right, I would just like to say, I think the, in this resolution, the first three wherethes really speak to what we've accomplished in the last couple of years and more specifically this last year, having a joint capital improvement program and a new process for our budget calendar with, you know, the board and our county staff. So I just have to thank the board and Tom Foley and staff for your leadership in getting us here, because I think we all know it has not been an easy process, but, so I thank you for your efforts there. Okay, with that, I have a motion and a second for R 18-211. With no other ques-
As amended.
As amended, yes, as amended and let me state that, deleting on Thursday, November 15th, 2018, ending that first, that paragraph with overviews backslash review period. Okay, with that, cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes unanimously, Ms. Mauer.
Okay, and item number six is being pulled for the same reason, this is another review of some revisions to the joint capital improvement program process and for the public's, for the public's benefit, one of the things that we did was we were doing this in a crawl, walk, run capacity. First, we looked at all bond funded projects, now we're entering adding the three R projects, which is repair, rehab and replacement. But in this document under September, there's a line item in green that says school board approves of program capacity methodology. Again, design capacity should be utilized as part of our capacity analysis in the CIP process, so I would like to strike that line from this revised process and I will make a motion to do so.
All right, I have a motion, is there a second?
I'd like to amend that motion. There's some additional changes that I would like to consider in this document, if we're going to approve that document.
Then it has to be a substitute.
What I'll do is I'll second it and then you can offer a substitute.
That works for me, thank you. I forgot.
Now it's your turn, Ms. Shelton.
Thank you, I'd like to make a substitute motion. I say, and what, my substitute motion is really based upon a lack of understanding of what the weighted values are on page 11 for the joint capital improvement process. And so as I understand that this program, or this process is meant to be for all capital improvements, not just things for the schools, and so when I look at the project ranking criteria, I don't understand why we decided that health, safety, education, operational budget and economic development are all on an equal basis. And I would like to amend that. And I would like to amend that so that health and safety has a higher percentage, because I think it does, definitely in the idea of issues around transportation, and I can talk about that, and then drop down the impact on economic development to offset that by 5% to 10.
So you want 20% and 10%?
Yes ma'am. I'm very willing, okay, thank you.
Okay, so health and safety would be 20 and economic development?
Economic and community development.
Would be 10.
10.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
The group spent a lot of time ranking these things and putting the appropriate percentages on, a lot of the input was from the Albemarle County model that we used. And so just to change them today without considerable thought from everyone involved on why and rationalize all this again, because I believe these numbers are fairly arbitrary anyhow, any re-ranking, I think, of these, of this criteria should be done at some sort of committee or work session, but not in, not at this forum.
Okay, any other comments?
Well, and I'll just say, I agree, I understand different people's interests, but I agree with Mr. Cavalier that at this forum, at this, and if, Madam Chair, if I can, Mr. Foley, were we to defer this, this would not put a great monkey wrench into things so that there could actually be a more deliberative process to that.
Yeah, I think the rest of the policy would stand if the percentages are going to change, we would need that as quickly as we can get it back, because the scoring will certainly be affected by the weight. So if that was done in the next couple of weeks, that process is going to get ready to get started and will become a foundational thing for the rest of the process, so if we were able to do that, you know, relatively shortly, it wouldn't affect the whole process.
Ms. Shelton?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Foley, I didn't know where we would send it to, and so it's just a question on where we would send this document to, for the board to review. And so I would agree that there's no, I don't have an understanding or any support or justification for those weighted values and there's not even a sample to kind of show us where that came from. So I would, I would agree that it does need to be changed, but I would also concur with what Mr. Cavalier is saying, is that where did they come from and what was this justification for?
Yeah, just briefly, the information, the weighted values that were in the Albemarle County policy were actually very different than what's in here. It was the Joint Schools Working Committee that considered this last June and had a significant debate about where, what the weighted values ought to be. And it was more reflective, a subjective reflective, reflection of this community's values. That's really, I think, the way that played out. There was not some objective criteria that was specifically used for this, but a lot of discussion that led to what you see before you. That could happen again through the working committee or a committee of the board or even just a work session of the board prior to the next meeting, if you wanted to do that, but that is more subjective in terms of what this community values and wants to place a higher value on.
In my concern, sir, just, ma'am, just a little bit more latitude, my concern, sir, is not, I agree with the Joint Schools' perspective, but this document covers everything, transport to everything, and so that's why I feel like the board should weigh in on what this criteria is, not just the Joint Schools.
The board approved this document last year, I believe in August or July, after fully considering it, so I think they passed their judgment on it, that doesn't mean it can't be reconsidered. Just for clarity. I will say also, by design, this is for all county capital projects, including schools, but it's not driven by schools. I think in each of these criteria, health and safety as an example, does play in educational projects and education may play into health and safety projects, so it is designed to be comprehensive and is laid out as such at this point.
Okay, so I guess one of the questions would be is, like, for example, you know, on item number eight, sustainability, energy efficiency, when you've got 10% for quality of life and we're giving that 5%, in my mind, that should be more like 2 and 1/2 if you're looking at quality of life and health and safety.
Point of order, Madam Chairman, has this motion been seconded yet?
It was.
It was, okay.
So, you know, it seems like, you know, some have said it's, these percentages are arbitrary, I understand, especially with your background, Ms. Shelton, you're feeling that it's not, what's the word I'm looking for? It's not, help me.
The decision criteria is not transparent, so that way our constituents can understand why we made a certain decision for a certain thing.
So, yes, exactly, so I guess the decision is, where do we go from here? Ms. Mauer and then Mr. Snelling.
Okay, so the committee that it was sent to was the Finance and Budget Committee, so if we want to, and I'll make two proposals, we could either send it back to Finance and Budget, or we can have a work session on it. I'm open to either one, because a work session involves all seven of us. If that is something to, but to just change it right now without considerable discussion, I am more, we need to, we need to approve it because this includes the three R projects and getting the three R projects into the process is critically important at this juncture. To flip around the waitings, let's say in November, is easier to do than it is to gather all the data we need for the three R projects. So if Ms. Shelton would humor me, we can go ahead and approve my motion with the understanding that we revisit in a work session, because I believe all, it sounds like all seven would want to weigh in on this, the waitings in order to have that done for when we're racking- when we're racking and stacking.
And just clarification-
Yes.
The working committee also did review this and make some recommendations, just so the record's clear, maybe the Joint Fab looked at it, but also the joint working, so you just need to consider how you want to move forward this time.
Okay, Mr. Snellings?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I agree with Ms. Mauer, we're not going to be able to settle this here today, so I suggest we go ahead and pass it, sign it to a committee, or a work session, and put some thought into it and come back, and we can always change it another time.
Okay.
If we do that, I withdraw my motion.
All right, thank you, so we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? And this is the original motion.
As amended.
As amended, with the green part out regarding-
School board approves the program capacity-
Correct.
-under September.
And the understanding that we're going to have a work session to look at the weighted values.
Correct. Okay, I have a motion and a second with those two amendments. Cast, Mr. Foley.
Hate to interrupt, I did want to just make one other point that actually Supervisor Cohen had, had brought to my attention. This does still contemplate that a joint Fab meeting will be how this process moves forward, and you're going to be considering your committees at, towards the end of this meeting, so it is possible that you could delay this until after that discussion to figure out if you need a different body that's going to review these, but it's however you all want to do that, I think we can fix it either way, just depends on what you conclude on whether or not you're going to continue with the Fab committee.
Right, so I think that given that we all seem to be somewhat in favor of a work session, that would include everybody. Yeah, and that is, I believe that's a discussion item, we won't be voting on that today. Right, because we pulled bylaws from our last meeting.
Yeah, and the Oversight Committee doesn't meet for some time, regardless of who it is.
Okay.
So you all could, yeah, you can change it at the work session.
Okay.
It would be a minor change to change this document, so.
Right. Okay, with all of that, please cast your vote, tally the vote. Motion passes with six in favor and one against. Okay, with that, we move on to item eighteen. Is that correct? Okay. Okay, we are now under item eighteen, unfinished business, Public Works, Transportation, amend and reordain County Code, Section fifteen dash fifty-six, designation of restricted parking areas within the Leland Station subdivision, proposed ordinance oh eighteen dash twenty-seventh in the Falmouth District. Mr. Towery.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Miss Chairman, members of the board, Jason Towery, Director of Public Works. As was discussed earlier in the public comment time, the Leland Station HOA sent a certificative resolution to the county back in April of this year. The board considered that resolution in, in July, which I'll touch on in just a moment. All the streets that they identified in their certificative resolution did meet the definition of a public highway as defined in Chapter fifteen of the county code. The board did authorize and hold the public hearing back in July, and then at the time there was some question as to potential cost of the signage, if there were any signage, and what the cost would be, as well as a determination to hold, or push the public hearing until further date, so that there could be further consideration by the HOA. Just to clarify, there, there is no signage required, this is, this basically places the roads into Chapter fifteen of the code, which designates them then as restricted parking area, and that basically means that if there's, and here's a picture of the roads within Leland Station, so that, that is restrictions on various commercial vehicles, and boats, and motorhomes, trailers, things of that nature, so that, in a nutshell, is, is what we're here to discuss today, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, Ms. Mauer.
Okay, so if we're not putting up any signage that it's restricted parking, what is the process? Do they automatically get ticketed? Do they get a notice of violation? How, how does the process play out?
Sure, so what, what the process contemplates is essentially that the, the homeowners themselves, in this case, the HOA, would provide notification to the neighborhood of this new restricted parking, and then this is actually enforced by the Sheriff's Department, so I'm not sure if they give out warnings per se, but there is potential for if, if there are violations, a thirty-five dollar fine that can be collected in those cases, and actually, if, if there's multiple violations, outstanding violations, that the vehicles can be towed, but it's, it's kind of an org, more organic process, if that makes sense, and it is listed in the code, so everything, all these streets will be placed into the list of, the comprehensive list that's within the county code.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Towery. All right, I, since this is in my district, I move for approval of oh eighteen dash twenty-seven.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second, any discussion? I would just like to say, on behalf of the community, I did defer this item in July, because I did receive a few emails from people, I went back and looked at everything that the HOA Board had done in Leland Station, and they had done everything with the letter of the law, there had been transparency, there was a little bit of concern with some homeowners that they felt that the process wasn't transparent, but all the information is out there, if you're willing, and, you know, you have to look for it. I did ask them to post on their Facebook page last week, indicating that we were considering this as unfinished business at today's meeting, at the three o'clock meeting, and that they could email me, or come out and speak publicly if they wanted to, if they were for or against. I probably received three or four, that, people that strongly supported it, and I received two people that had questions about the, about the ordinance. One thought that it was giving too much leverage to the Sheriff's Department, and they had better things to do with their time, but in reality, we already have sixteen subdivisions in Stafford County that are a part of this ordinance that was put in place back in two thousand and ten, and I don't think, so just to let the public know, that an HOA Board only has certain rights, and, and with, that are all within their covenants, that are approved when homeowners purchase those homes, but if there are things that occur on the public streets, the HOA Board is not authorized to take action on those items, and that's where you need the Sheriff's Department in the event there are situations that occur. So, you know, I reached out to the sheriff, and he said there are situations where you have people that park cars, and they're in an egress or ingress area, they might be blocking where emergency vehicles come in, but he said that they handle everything with the way they handle their matters in Stafford County. They work with homeowners, you know, you, they just don't go in, as we all know, and tow people's cars. They're, they're communicating with homeowners, and giving them an opportunity, just like we do on any other notices of violation in our county, we try to work with our citizens before, you know, drastic action is taken. So I, with that information, I would ask for your support on oh eighteen dash twenty-seven, and if there's no further discussion, cast your vote. That motion passes unanimously, and now we're moving on to two items that we have, and that would be for Ms. Light, Finance and Budget, item nineteen, authorize the initial and final issuance and sale of Virginia Public School Authority, VPSA bonds for schools' fiscal year two thousand and nineteen capital improvement projects. We're considering proposed Resolution R eighteen dash one ninety-one, and Resolution R eighteen dash two hundred.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, I'm Andrea Light, Budget Division Director here at Stafford County. On August twenty-first, the board held a public hearing to issue VPSA debt for school capital projects. Presented to the board today are proposed Resolutions eighteen, one ninety-one, which provides authorization for debt anticipated to be borrowed in fiscal year eighteen for Fredericksburg Christian School, the Rock Hill Elementary Mechanical System Replacement, and a million dollars for Moncur Elementary School. It also includes authorization for debt that is anticipated to be entered into in fiscal year twenty, for the Ferry Farm Elementary School rehabilitation, as staff anticipates that the construction contracts will be entered into in the spring of two thousand and nineteen. The board has many options available to them today when it comes to authorizing the debt. Typically, what we have done in the past is authorize the debt for all of the construction projects that we'll be entering into within the next fiscal year. The board can choose to do that same methodology and authorize the entire debt in Proposed Resolution eighteen, one ninety-one. The board could choose only to authorize the debt to be issued in the fall of two thousand and eighteen. They would need to hold a public hearing to authorize the debt prior to entering into contracts for within the timing of the construction contracts in January and the remainder of the fiscal year nineteen projects to be borrowed. They could authorize the debt to be issued in fiscal year nineteen, and only hold a public hearing to authorize the debt prior to entering into the construction contracts for Ferry Farm Elementary Rehabilitation, which we anticipate to be spring of two thousand and nineteen. I'm happy to take any questions.
All right, Ms. Mauer.
Okay, so just for clarification, although I do know the answer, but I think it's important for the public, this is just authorizing the debt, it is not appropriating the funds.
Yes, ma'am, this authorization does not hold the board to any further obligation, it does not enter us into having any, to entering into a debt, or that would happen when we ratified these bonds, and that could be done today, that could be done September fifteenth, it has to be done for the fall borrow before October first.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Ms. Light? Okay, just under item ten, the effective date, there is a reference in there to August twenty-first?
August twenty-first was our public hearing.
Ah, just wanted to make sure, okay, gotcha. Doesn't say that it was the public hearing, okay. All right, okay, with no other questions for Ms. Light, we can go ahead and vote on these separately. Nope, I need a motion and a second, just thinking that.
Okay, I'll move R eighteen, one nine one.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Okay, with that, cast your vote, tally the vote. Motion passes unanimously. All right. Item twenty, or excuse me, R eighteen dash two hundred, the final issuance, okay?
Is that the motion?
That is, no, it's just the final issuance.
Just the issuance of it, so I'll make a motion for that.
Okay, I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Okay, with that, cast your vote for R eighteen dash two hundred, and this would be the final Tally the vote. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, moving right on to item number twenty, Finance and Budget, authorize the county administrator to budget and appropriate cash and bond funding for the schools' fiscal year two thousand and nineteen capital improvement projects. We have two resolutions here, R eighteen dash two oh one and R eighteen dash two oh nine.
Madam Chair-
Yes.
-I might just mention, point out that we did receive letters from the school board that you had requested regarding the matters that are before you for consideration, that's new material, it's in your add-on folder, and it was provided to you yesterday.
Thank you very much for sending that out to the board. This is basically the information we've been requesting from the board for the last six weeks, so we do have everything that we have asked for. Ms. Light.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Today, we're asking you to consider the budget appropriation for the VPSA bonds for the fall of two thousand and eighteen that we will enter into, and for cash that is available both in reserves and in the current year budget. The board may remember that when we did the CIP, the fiscal year nineteen to twenty-eight, there were many different funding sources that were contemplated. Of these, there were, we looked at all of our reserves, both in our Capital Projects Fund and in our General Fund, to see if there were available revenue sources that could be used to help balance the CIP. Of those today, we're asking that the board consider budgeting and appropriating, whoops, one million, six hundred, eleven, five hundred, forty-seven, which is dedicated to Capital The board may also remember that at the end, or in June, before we finished the CIP, that the governor's budget was finalized, and we decided, because the, the governor's budget was more than what was anticipated in the schools, we held back part of the school's local transfer of about one point four million dollars. This resolution today asks the board to contemplate budgeting and appropriating a local transfer of a million dollars to the Capital Projects Fund, which was in the CIP as a balanced source, so that all the projects can be completed.
Any questions for Ms. Light?
I do have a couple of questions. So as I cross-reference what you have in this document and the resolution, and first and foremost, thank you. I, I, I like the stair stepping of funding on some of these projects, because what we've been finding out is that they will over-ask on an amount, which is their estimate, and then move that money to fund other projects that weren't under contemplation. So I do appreciate you coming back to us with this stair stepping of funding, but if I am reading this correctly, we, for this money, we are considering the Fredericksburg Christian School, the Ferry Farm Design renovations-
Yes.
-the Rock Hill Elementary School Mechanical, and the A.G. Wright and Garrisonville Elementary School renovations is part of this funding that we're talking about sending over in this resolution, is that correct?
You are correct, ma'am.
Okay, so the only thing I will ask, I'm gonna, I'm going to motion to approve for, for this particular resolution, because I like the way that it's being laid out, but I would like to see in future resolutions, I know it's here in the background package, but I would like those projects laundry listed in here in the actual resolution in the future, and I, I know we're changing our processes, so this is a, this is a learning process for all of us, and the reason that's important to me is that even though, even though, once we send that money over across the street, they can say that they want to spend it on whatever, I, I get that, but I need, it's important to me, as, as a voting member of this body, that the public knows what my intent is when I make these, when I make these resolutions, because we have seen, and, and, and one thing that, that really kind of chaps my heart a lot, is there was a lot of drama over the North Stafford High School, and, and the library expansion, and, and doing the locker bay, and they said, we can't do it, there's no money, it's, you know, not going to happen, and we're poor, and magically, without any action on this body, that got done, and after so much drama, both on Facebook and between the boards, and it even made it into a proffer, because it was, it became such a point of contention. So I don't know how the magic can, happened, but evidently it's done, there was a ribbon cutting and stuff, but it's important for me that, that our intent is- But it's important for me that, that our intent is outlined as we send this across the street.
Madam Chair, we, we will be bringing some more specific, um, new procedures and guidelines and even policy before you in the next month or so, and we'll make sure that we add that to, to the changes that we'll make in the future.
Okay, any other questions for Ms. Light?
Do, ma'am, I don't have any questions, but do we need a second for Ms. Mauer's motion?
Yes.
Sorry.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions? All right, the first one is R. 18-201. Cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion for R. 18-209.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, please cast your vote for R. 18-209. Tally the vote. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, thank you very much for all your efforts there. All right, item 21, under new business, planning and zoning, discuss investigation of anonymous complaints. Item 21, Mr. Harvey.
Good afternoon, Madam Chairman, board members. I'm Jeff Harvey, the Director of Planning and Zoning. This is a continuation of the discussion from the July Community and Economic Development Committee meeting to discuss about our code-compliance process, specifically with anonymous complaints and also transparency for the public's knowledge about complaints. In specific, our department handles complaints dealing with tall grass, trash, abandoned vehicles, also issues dealing with zoning, for instance, if someone puts up a large sign without a permit, or someone's operating a business out of their home without proper permits, and things of that nature. We currently receive most of those complaints via telephone call, but there are some that come through the main webpage through, to me, which gets forwarded onto staff. We currently have two staff members that inspect these complaints in the county. One covers the north part of the county, the other covers the south part of the county, and we accept all the complaints, whether they're anonymous or not. Currently, anonymous complaints comprise about 20% of our total volume that come in, and those complaints are just usually a phone call, and someone saying, "My, this person at this address is doing something I don't like," and then we investigate. There are, there is some concern about, is that the best use of staff time for that purpose? However, most of our complaints come in with people who identify themselves and where they live, and their contact information, and provide us with that, so we can get back to them and follow up to see whether the complaint is legitimate or not, and if they're indeed is a code violation. So, a question for the board is, would the board like staff to continue with processing anonymous complaints? And also, too, what level of transparency the board feels is important? There was some discussion at the committee meeting about possibly making that information available through FOIA, as far as who made the complaint and what their contact information was. If the board was to do, instruct staff to do that, there would also have to be consideration for changing the board's FOIA policy. I'll be happy to answer any questions or, or take any instruction from the board.
Any questions for Mr. Harvey? Ms. Mauer.
Okay, so, this came up because I have a constituent who was making some posts that were less than flattering of this board. And like magic, lots of magic happens here in Stafford County, she received a zoning violation complaint soon thereafter, and my concern about the zoning violation complaint was that it came from what I would consider a member in standing. And what I mean by that is it was a member of one of our boards and commissions who were not in my district, and because this particular constituent actually lives in my neighborhood, I can attest that there was no reason that this complaint should have come in. So, a couple of concerns that I had with this particular complaint and how it was processed, and so here's where the question comes for you. Have we updated the way we process complaints? And, and the reason this is important is the documents related to the complaint was FOIA'd, and one of the things that was noticed was, number one, it was stated that the complaint was based upon, they were running a business out of their home, and based upon website evidence was the reason we sent out somebody to knock on this constituent's door. And that website evidence actually indicated that this person had no website, but they did have a Facebook page, and the Facebook page showed that they had a commercial place of business in Central Park. So, and it was on the Facebook page, so, so I couldn't understand why that commercial place of business in Central Park would take them to a home business, thinking there was a zoning violation, but the processing of the paperwork was not entered according to the timestamp of your system, was not actually entered into the system until the date the FOIA was, was sent in. And so if you look at how all the paperwork was processed in the system, all of a sudden, all that information was entered into the system in the planning department on the date of the FOIA request, which was a month after the, the actual complaint was made. So, so these are some of the concerns that I have, and, and it's, I do not think, and I want to be very, very, very clear about this, I do not think that our planning and zoning staff had any mal-intent. That is very, very important. But my concern is, is that the planning and zoning staff may have been a little bit more motivated, because the complaint, and I only found this out because I threw such a hissy fit, the complaint came from somebody who was standing on one of our, our boards and commissions, that wasn't even in my district, because I questioned all of my, my, my appointees. And so, so it's, this is where I get a little concern, and when I read this, this staff's recommendation to withhold names from, from FOIA, I would like this board to at least not withhold the names of people that I would consider to be people of standing, because part of me, although I'm not saying for a fact, part of me wonders if this was in retaliation, because all of the evidence that I read, there was, and the fact that I lived down the street from this person, there was no way, no way this individual was running a business out of their home. And I don't want our staff to, number one, waste their time, but number two, to be kind of used as a weapon of retaliation, and so.
Mr. Snellings.
I'd like to see all this evidence. If we're going to change this rule, I'd like to know why we're changing it. Obviously, somebody on this board or somebody on a commission is being accused of this. It's a pretty serious accusation, so I want to see the evidence before I vote.
Madam Chairman.
Mr. Dudenheffer.
I, I knew the peripherals of this, this complaint. My question is, is due process? I mean, somebody calls in and makes a complaint, and we issue a, you know, a violation? How did that work in this particular case?
Mr. Dudenheffer, the county does not issue a violation unless there is one. In this particular situation, there was no violation to be found, but the staff person did investigate it and did go to the property and speak to the property owner.
But shouldn't there be something more substantive before you start stirring up a citizen, just based on someone making an anonymous phone call? I mean, aren't we setting ourselves up for a neighbor who's mad at another neighbor just calling in and saying, "Hey, you know, he's got a bolt constrictor in his basement," or, you know what I mean? And you go knocking on the door to find out? I mean, there, there seems to me, I don't think the police department would do that. You know, they, if someone calls and says, "There's a, I think there are drugs in this house down the street," I don't think they'd go knocking on the door and ask him, "Do you have drugs in this house?" So my, my question is, is why isn't there a, something, I mean, there was no pre-investigation, they just went down and thought they'd ask the person. If they'd have done a little more research, wouldn't they have found out that this was not the case, and they should have just dropped it at that? I'm having a hard time understanding why, what the process was, and how prompt somebody showed up at the door. I mean, within hours, they showed up at the, at the door. I mean, it, to me, this whole thing kind of reeks, I got to tell you, Jeff. I, I don't understand it. Where's the due process in this? Or is this normal process? Do we do this on every case? We get an anonymous call in sometime later that day? We have a, an investigator goes and knocks on that person's door that's being accused?
Mr. Dudenheffer, a lot of the, the timing can go to where the inspector is and what they're doing, and when they find out about the complaint. If we receive a complaint and that inspector's going out to that part of the county or that neighborhood anyway, they may go there the next day, or maybe later that afternoon, depending upon the situation. The inspectors typically spend half a day in the office, half a day in the field, or they rotate a day, day in the office, day in the field, because we have them also in our zoning rotation for helping customers at our front counter. So some of that is a function of timing, but some of it could be also a situation where the person who was doing the inspection unfortunately didn't do their homework before they went out. They jumped on it, thinking that they were being responsive, but that may not have been the correct path to go on.
So what is your process? You get a phone call, it says so-and-so's operating a business out of their house. What, what would, what is the standard process for Stafford County to respond to that?
Our process now is to do a web research to find out if we can find anything to justify that. For instance, if someone complains their neighbor's operating Airbnb or something of that nature, we'll look on the websites to see if we can find anything listed. Similarly, if there's a business, is there a business that's listed at that address? If not...
So what happens if we find, we can't find any evidence, but we have, still have this complaint hanging out there, then what happens?
We would take the next step and go to the property and see, number one, outside of, of the, the property, does it show any signs of a business? And then also, two, speak to the owner.
I think that's where we fall down, just because we leave ourselves open for frivolous complaints that can be acts of vengeance or whatever. I mean, they may be legitimate, I'm not saying, but I think there should be something that corroborates that from an investigation, whether it's a, you look at the house and you see that they've got a force, or, you know, come knock on the door and buy a popsicle or something, I don't know, but it, but it, without any justification except for a complaint, stirring up a neighbor, I mean, you know, what would that, what's that neighbor supposed to think? "You won't tell me who complained in my neighborhood, and maybe I could explain to you that last night at an HOA meeting, we got into a disagreement with each other," and I'm not surprised that person would do that. And to me, if you make a false complaint, I think there, what's the repercussions for that? There are none, as far as I know.
Mr. Dudenheffer, you are correct. The practice of accepting anonymous complaints has gone on since I can recall being here with the county nearly 30 years, and maybe it's time that that process changed, because the county is a bigger place. Like you have said, we've had examples where a neighbor complains on neighbor, and using the county as a conduit to work out their personal grudges. Unfortunately, that does happen. Sometimes the complainant actually is in violation too, but they don't realize it until someone complains about them. So, it's one of those things, again, if we eliminate anonymous complaints, it would help resolve some of that issue.
Well, my final, just a comment, is that I, I think we should, this needs to be reviewed at another level, where we can just work out, I mean, what does the sheriff do if he gets an anonymous call or something? We certainly shouldn't be more aggressive than our sheriff's department in how we do this. I think it's certainly disruptive. I, I don't want to discourage people from actually calling, and if there's a legitimate complaint, but there has to be a way that that person who's being accused has some due process before we go knock on their door and say that they're, you know, and ask them, "Well, you know, there's a complaint, are you doing a business?" That, that could be considered self-incrimination. What happens if they say no? And, you know, later we find they are. I mean, what recourse do we have then? I mean, what, to me, this has, this reeks of all kinds of complications.
Yes, Mr. Dudenheffer.
We're in a complicated world these days.
We certainly are, and ultimately, if there is a violation and they don't abate it, we can go to court. But if our inspector has gone out and has no reason to suspect that there isn't a violation, then we will call back the person who complained, assuming they leave their contact information, let them know that, so there is some closure.
Do we disclose the name of someone if, if they call and say, "Hey, don't, don't tell anybody my name, but this is who I am." Could we, is there, what's the process then?
Correct, as Ms. Mauer says, currently, we do not disclose complaints, who the complainant is or their contact information.
But if somebody was to subpoena or investigate, we know who it is.
The, the county does, yes, and, and Ms. McLendon may be able to speak to that in terms of court and how that works.
Well, I, I think this needs to be looked at, and we need to get the legal ramifications of some of the actions we're taking.
Well, and I think the other issue is, you know, are, do people of standing in the community have any, any greater rights than anybody else? And I think the answer would be no. So, I mean, I do have a lot of people that, you know, they don't want to call their neighbor and say, "Golly, you know, you haven't cut your grass all, all summer, you know, and we've had a 100-year flood and a 500-year flood, and the grass is three feet tall." I mean, some people, you know, they care about what their community looks like, but it's not in them to call and have that conversation with their neighbor. So, I do understand, and, you know, when I send emails to your department, I just say "a constituent," because that's who they are to me. Who it is at that point in time isn't, you know, isn't important. The issue is that an inspector goes out and looks at it and determines if we have a notice of violation. But, you know, I, I do hear all of your all's concerns, and, you know, people of standing in the community shouldn't be making phone calls to planning and zoning and instructing them to do X, Y, and Z. That's just not, that's what happens in DC.
And just to clarify, we, we wouldn't do anything any different regardless of who called us. We have a procedure that we follow regardless of the standing of anybody in the community. I think the question is whether or not we're going to take any anonymous complaints in the future.
Right, so we'll have, so, all right, let me hear from other board members. Ms. Shelton, did you have something?
Yes, I did. Mr. Harvey, it sounds like you have a schedule, so you know when people are going to go out in the community. So I suspect on this particular instance, we probably already know that something inappropriate happened, okay? Moving on past that. Just in the time that I've been in the board, I know of two situations right now where I get complaints from people that are really retaliatory. So, I prefer that we match what our peer communities are doing and the information that you gave us, and change that, so we now no longer allow anonymous complaints. And so I think it's important that we're accountable for our own actions, and if I'm going to complain about somebody, and if I'm not this kind of person that wants to go and talk to them personally about it, and I want to go to the county, then at least should know, they should know where it came from. So, I will support this.
Madam Chair, two of our comparative localities do take anonymous complaints and others don't, so there's no, there's no clear conclusion on that, and Mr. Harvey can clarify.
Yes, because there are, there's a chart behind this item.
So based on research, you could go either way on this.
Right. All right, Mr. Snellings.
I'm not, let me defend staff here. I don't think this was handled inappropriately. I mean, nobody went out and kicked somebody's door down, did they? You rang the doorbell, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And you asked a question, the question was no. You said, "Thank you very much," and came home, correct?
Yes.
So I think we're blowing this way out of proportion. Believe me when I tell you, we all complain to staff for our constituents every day. I had five complaints last week, calling me, asking me to report their neighbor, or the guy down the street, "The grass is too tall," this, this, and this, and that's going to continue. Now, when we call in, do we have to, under this new rule you want to go to, or whatever it is, do we have to say, "Oh, by the way, that was Joe Smith that said that?" So we really got to think this thing out, folks. This is not going to be an easy one, because if you say, "No more anonymous complaints," you won't get any more complaints. All you're going to get is the grass growing tall.
Now, just for me, and everybody has a different system, I email all mine in, because I want Anthony Toigo on all of them, so it can get added to my weekly list, and then I can remember and keep track of constituent issues that are out there. Mr. Cohen?
I'll just say...
I'll just say thank you for the fact that your staff goes and handles the bad grass issues and, as far as tall grass, not quality thereof. Tall grass issues in my area, and I appreciate it very much, and thank you for those people doing that.
For Ms. Rashida, if that's-
Uh, Ms. Mauer.
Okay. When we do a FOIA request, so let's say I get, I've, I've gotten complaints neighbor-on-neighbor through my, my emails, and we get a FOIA request, are those complaints the emails sent in the FOIA request?
Supervisor Mauer and Madam Chairman, I'm not exactly sure-
So is the identity of the complainant, when somebody, when I receive an email and it's a complaint, I had one in, I can't reme, it was a long time ago, it went, it went back and forth for, and somebody did a FOIA request, would those emails that has the complainant's information be released? Is it only, and, and the reason I ask this question, is it only complaints that are received directly to planning and zoning that are not released? Or are my emails also released?
The, the FOIA exemption is very specific to zoning enforcement, building code enforcement, or state fire prevention code enforcement. So if there's any other type of complaints, that's not encapsulated in this particular exception.
Okay. Thank you. And that is a policy of the board, it's not a state policy?
The state sets the allowable authority, and then the board has chosen to adopt the policy to, to prevent disclosure of that information, but the state allows it to be adopted by the board.
Okay. And, and I would also like to make one more request of, of you, Madam Chair and the Vice Chairman. So the name hasn't been released to me. It was only through a slip of the tongue that I found out it was somebody who was a member of one of our boards and commissions, and I would ask you and Mr. Snellings to make sure that this wasn't a retaliation issue. If you can do that on behalf of the board, I would be appreciative.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Harvey.
You're welcome.
Moving right along to item number twenty-two. Discuss affordable housing and definition of a housing authority in Virginia. Mrs. Kraus, and I appreciate you allowing us to move you from last month's very, very full agenda to this one.
You're welcome. Computer, please.
Ms. Kraus, I've got to research and find your PowerPoint, it's not included in the board package, it'll be just a minute.
Okay. Well, I'll just start. So they don't have it either? They don't have, okay. Well, Donna Kraus, Madam Chairman, members of the board, Director of Community Engagement and Human Services, and this is a follow-up item to Mr. Snellings' request about affordable housing. I'm going to give you a little bit of background and then go into the laws around a housing authority. So affordable housing has been, oh, thank you.
Computer, please.
There we go. Affordable housing has been a growing topic within the region and has been for a number of years. Back in 2008, the GWRC initiated a task force group, which Stafford County did support and was a part of, and they did an extensive research and background and provided a report that is very, very detailed, which you have in your background package. Since then, the Rappahannock United Way has developed or did a study on financial hardship that was called Alice. You may have recalled that presentation to you all from the United Way. And that looked across the Commonwealth, including Stafford, and gave us some very good information with, for our residents. Most recently, Ms. Baumke and I met with Virginia Organizing, is a nonprofit group looking at affordable housing. They provided a lot of information and talked about their initiatives and what they're looking at, and shared a lot of information with us, asked us a lot of questions, and that was held at the GWRC along with their staff and some other community partners. The city of Fredericksburg is also looking at putting out an RFP to complete a regional study on, on affordable housing. This is in the progress right now. And then the county, back in 2008, we amended our comprehensive plan and included language to address affordable housing. There's several goals and objectives around that that we can, that we have the ability to, to move forward on. So the Virginia Code does have a great many options to localities to address affordable housing, and when we talk about affordable housing, the GWRC work group did create a definition of that based on income at various levels, from emergency housing all the way up to workforce housing, and it was based on percentages of median income, and that's information that's also in your background materials. But throughout the code, there are many, many ways that we can, as a county, address that. I've listed some of them here. They're very extensive, there's a lot of information, and if we were to take on any of these or look at these further, I think that we would need some additional review and research to see what would be the right fit for our locality in moving forward.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Janice Ewing, Assistant County Attorney. I'm going to go over our Virginia housing authorities. So each locality may establish a redevelopment and housing authority in its jurisdiction, and they are activated by referendum. I think I skipped a one. And they are governed by a board of commissioners that are appointed by the local governing body. They are between nine and five in, in the amount. So what can a housing authority do? Generally, they exist to promote safe and sanitary housing for all citizens within the Commonwealth. Generally, they operate housing projects, they administer federally funded programs, these are the Section Eight, the HOPE, these types of programs. They also work to redevelopment, to redevelop land, to eliminate blight and redevelopment, and to develop property to eliminate and increase affordable housing. The powers of authorities. Now, a housing authority is considered a local entity. So housing authorities have extensive enumerated powers. Once created, they can sue and be sued, they can make and execute contracts, and they can make and repeal laws and other regulations that execute their purposes. None of these rules, regulations can be inconsistent with law. In connection with a housing project, and a housing project is defined as any work to demolish or clear buildings or slum area, or also to provide safe or sanitary dwellings, apartments, or other living accommodations for persons of low and moderate income. So in connection with any housing project, a housing authority may lease, rent those dwellings, land, they may own, improve, purchase, acquire, sell, dispose of real property or personal property, they may exercise eminent domain to acquire any real property, and they may insure or provide for the insurance of that real property. Additional powers include, they may make loans and grants of federal funds or other sources for the prevention of elimination of blight or slum areas, they may borrow money, issue bonds, and other obligations and give security.
Okay.
Question. How do we, how do we define prevention and elimination of blighted or slum areas?
It's a broad term, but-
It scares me.
Yes, it does.
Especially if you're talking about eminent domain.
Yes, and the Virginia Code specifically defines blight. It's considered any prop, any structures or improvements that endangering the public's health, safety, and welfare. They are often dilapidated structures in various states of deterioration or that violates minimum health and safety standards. So there has to be determination by the local governing body that it is a blighted area before they can move forward.
And what would be, what would be the size of this blight? Are we talking about, we can exercise eminent domain for the shuttered gas station on 610 and call that blight? Or are we talking about large, is there an acreage minimum here?
No. And there is a difference between one that's done in, in conjunction with a housing project and one that's done in conjunction with a redevelopment or conservation area. Now, the governing body of any locality can set out a redevelopment area, which would stipulate a certain land size. A redevelopment area has to have a certain percentage of blighted properties within it. A conservation area only has to have certain deteriorated homes, they don't have to be fully blighted, and that determination is made by the local governing body. Once a governing body sets out a redevelopment or conservation area, then the authority will set out a plan, which then is approved by the governing body. So there are some controls, but it can be very large.
Madam Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Dudenheffer.
The next bullet here says, borrow money, issue bonds, and other obligation. Who's on the hook for paying those?
The authority is. But the-
Where, okay. Where do they get their money from?
From the governing body, from the federal government, state government, various sources, but they, they will request funds from the governing body, the local governing body.
So some, someone is going to issue them bonds to do housing developments based on income that they receive from whatever sources they're getting it from? The local governing body has no responsibility for the coverage of those, those bonds? Is that correct?
Correct. They'll be issued in there, in the name of the authority, just like an IDA and EDA when they issue bonds.
So there's a, an appointed body that is given authority to go out and borrow money and issue bonds?
Yes, sir.
And to condemn private property?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Additionally, a housing authority can make grants, loans, free, refinance loans, all of these are for the rehabilitation and repair of residential, commercial, other buildings. Approval is required by a local governing body if the building is not located within a housing project, redevelopment, or conservation area. So for any building that's outside of these approved areas. Additionally, a housing authority may-
Ms. Ewing.
Yes.
Ms. Mauer.
Yeah, I, let's go back to this body for a second. So they're given this broad authority to condemn properties, eminent domain, and once we appoint them and they go rogue, can we yank them all off?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Just a little nervous.
Yes. Additionally, and I'll go ahead and, and mention this, the eminent domain power is limited. It is limited to housing projects, it's limited to blight removal. There is an entire spot blight removal process that's set out in the code, which has a local government, governing body weigh in on what is considered blight before it's continued on. And they're also limited to certain areas that are approved. Also, an authority's power is limited to state and local laws, they are subject to planning, zoning, state building codes. Again, I spoke about the eminent domain, there are some limitations to that power. It does exist, but there are some limitations. And the powers cannot be used for private enterprise, job creation, tax revenue generation, or economic development. Does the board have any further questions?
Mr. Snellings.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Getting back to a question Ms. Mauer had about if, if we had an appointed authority, like any authority or commission we have, and it goes quote rogue, we can remove them?
Yes.
But that's a pretty difficult process, isn't it? I mean, we can't, my understanding is if we've got someone on the, someone on the airport authority that is appointed for a four-year term, we just can't go snatch them off because we don't agree with what they're doing. So what is the process, or would be the process, to remove someone from that authority?
I would probably need to go back and look at, it's set out in the state code, so I can definitely come back with that information. I do know that they are set on certain terms, and they will have bylaws that will have to be approved and reviewed by the board.
The other thing that concerns me is the two words eminent domain. I'm agreeing with Mr. Dudenheffer on his comment, who's on the hook? Someone's got to provide the funding here. Now, I know federal government may, or state government may, but if an authority that's appointed by this body goes out, getting away from eminent domain a minute, and borrows a lot of money, and they don't pay it back, you're saying we're not on the hook for that? That's not our responsibility.
No, it is not. They will have to go out for bonds in the name of that authority, and they will have to provide any financing that's required for those bonds, but they're not bonds under the name of Stafford County or the board.
Then the last is eminent domain. That really concerns me, when any authority has the power of eminent domain. But what you're saying, are you saying that if this board identifies an area that is quote blight, then they have power of eminent domain? Or do they have to come for us, to us to request that power?
Well, if an individual structure is determined it's blight, there's a process set out in the, in the state code with respect to spot blight, which goes through the county administrator and through a process, they'll have a public hearing, and then the board will have to make that determination. If it is a redevelopment or conservation area, once the board approves that area and approves, and approves the authority's plan, they can set out and go through the process of eminent domain within those areas.
Without any approval from the governing body.
Without any further approvals.
Okay. Last comment, probably more directed at Ms. Kraus's presentation. The GWRC study, I believe, is ten years old, done in 2008, and for some reason, the city of Fredericksburg decided to do a regional study on their own, but that's another subject. Would, I would like to see or request GWRC to possibly go back and do another one, because we, this is a ten-year-old study that would better identify or define what affordable housing is in our area. Because right now, with all this information, I still don't know. I, I don't know what the, the salary incomes are to qualify, I don't know any of that. So I don't know if GWRC would be willing to do that, but I'd like to request it.
All right. Did you have something else to add, Ms. Kraus? Thank you.
No, don't go too far. I don't know if this is for you or not. Thank you, Madam Chair. I think you said my name.
I didn't, but go ahead.
Okay. A couple of quick questions, and it might actually end up going to Mr. Harvey, but if the concept is that our current zoning is such that it's not affordable to certain levels, like, you know, first-year people in my job, or our fire and police and other, and we have the current zoning, and even if they use eminent domain to go after this parcel of land, the zoning would be the same, so that's not really going to help them, correct? Is that, am I using logic, or is this the wrong thing to do?
Madam Chairman, Mr. Cohen, a lot of the issues that deal with affordable housing are the economics. Zoning has something to play with, into it, because zoning reflects how many homes per acre you could put in, but sometimes it could be that the housing authority would condemn the property, then use that property essentially at zero cost to help them build their complex.
Right, but I mean, if, 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 for example, the parcel is already zoned X, and they can't build multiple units on that, then that won't help them. I mean, I'm thinking, I keep going to that, you know, that gas station that's shuttered, or that, you know, thing that's, you know, this former store that's all shuttered up, that's zone B1, which only will allow certain type of units, so therefore, they really wouldn't be affordable units because it's not allowed in that category, right?
Yes, sir.
So would they have to-
They still have to comply with the, the local zoning codes.
Zoning, okay.
And our comprehensive plan would also have something to say about what they can change the zoning to as a guideline.
Right, okay. And then if, do I understand, for example, I know we have a redevelopment area, we have several redevelopment areas we've decided as redevelopment areas, but it's not because they're blighted or this, that, and the other, it's just that we'd like to see them change. But that doesn't necessarily mean that it's a blight that we want, that this group could automatically then turn around and say, okay, this whole area is considered redevelopment area, so now we can move forward. Does that make sense?
Yes, Mr. Cohen, you are correct. My interpretation would be the board would have to take a separate step to physically designate what that redevelopment area is for the purposes of the housing authority.
Right, and we'd almost have to go back and rename the stuff that we already named. I agree with Mr. Snellings, I do think that we need to figure out what it is that's affordable or not. I do know that every ride-along, I'm sure Ms. Shelton, who's done ride-alongs as well, every ride-along I go on, whether it's police or fire or rescue, or people I see in my day job, it's, people can't afford half-million-dollar homes when they're getting a starter job. So for normal people, it's very difficult to find housing. It's even getting hard down in Spotsy. So I think Mr. Snellings is right, we need to figure out what the situation is and see what we need to do to make it available for people, but before we leap, I think we need to have a little bit more information.
Well, I'm happy to take this back to GWRC if, if, if that's what you, if that's the direction and will of the board. As, as Ms. Kraus indicated, you know, we have made a presentation, I see Rabebe here in the crowd from Virginia Organizing, and he was a part of those meetings as well. So it's something we can talk to the executive director about and see if we can get it on their agenda. So, yeah, I mean, I, when I was in California doing bond financings, we, we issued revenue bonds for the- bonds for the city of Palm Desert to help provide housing for a lot of their service employees out there. And we basically used all the cash from those rental units, and it was in a redevelopment area. So in addition to the rents, we used the increase in the home values, which was the redevelopment tax increment, and we leveraged that towards the bonds. And then we wrapped the whole financing with a letter of credit, so it basically was a triple-A product when it was sold in the bond market. So now, did it trade like a regular triple-A general obligation bond? No, but it was still triple-A, you know, and it was never the full faith and obligation of the city of Palm Desert, it was strictly a revenue financing. So, you know, but I'm curious, do we know how many housing authorities there are in the state? Is there one in Hampton Roads and one in Northern Virginia? Do we know?
I couldn't, I, Madam Chair, I can't give you a definitive number, I want to say between 10 and 12. Most of them were started in the 50s, 60s, 70s. The closest ones to us would be Prince William County, Arlington, Loudoun, Fairfax Counties also have one, most cities. A lot of areas will have joint ones between several counties or municipalities within an area, where they'll have a regional authority.
Okay.
But not many in this area, Fredericksburg, Spoxfany County, there, none of them have a housing authority.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, and, Madam Chair, Vice Chairman Snellings had asked about removal of a commissioner. The governing body may remove any commissioner if misconduct or neglect of duty is found, however, you have to provide a hearing for them, and a list of those neglect or issues.
Yeah.
Thank you, and I think, I think the problem with that is it, it becomes very difficult-
Yes.
-to remove anyone from a commission or an authority or a board. It really is a difficult thing. You cannot, you cannot punish somebody for making a decision based on what they thought was correct.
Correct.
Right, thank you.
Bottom line is, housing authorities have a tremendous amount of power.
Madam Chair, I'd just add, in talking with the city manager, their study is really to look at all kinds of alternatives to affordable housing, including housing authorities. So they're doing an evaluation to determine what might be appropriate for the city, just to clarify that. And I think establishing a housing authority is a pretty extreme measure, if you will, at one end of the spectrum. So I think, I think that question probably moves into how do we address affordable housing, rather than is a, an authority the thing to do?
Correct.
Because that's sort of just one alternative at the extreme. It's usually in very urban areas, it has a lot of blight and a lot of-
Right.
... density kind of issues, so.
All right, thank you. Okay, thank you for your presentations. Okay, the next item is item number 23. Mr. Presley is going to make a presentation on our new downtown Stafford.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Fred Presley, Deputy County Administrator. Can I have the computer, Marsha? So as you know, we've been working on this downtown Stafford project for a while now. What I'd like to do here is just give an overview, not just for this board, obviously, you just had a workshop a few weeks ago, but also for the public. We're going to start with a little bit of the history of this, because it goes back well before we started work on the recent project here. This goes back to 2006, and Jeff Harvey will be presenting briefly on that. We'll talk about the current efforts and, that led up to the workshop that you had two weeks ago, discussed in more detail the market and gap analysis reports that were completed by the development advisors, and then also get to some of the questions that came up post-workshop from some of the board members that we think are important, and to draw some distinctions between what's being proposed here in downtown Stafford with some of the other developments that are going on in the county. So, and then we'll go on to the next step. So I'll ask Jeff to come up and do the history portion here.
Thank you, Fred. 2006 was the start of our first real concerted effort that was documented for discussions about a downtown Stafford. However, I've been involved in planning-level discussions with the Economic Development Department and a few board members, all the way back to 2003. In 2006, as part of our effort to do our 2010 comp plan, we sent out a citizen survey and asked for respondents, and over half of them indicated that they strongly supported establishment of multi-use town centers. And that theme has carried on throughout the years, about people wanting to see more of a Stafford in Stafford, or places that we can go for entertainment and, and find it to be unique and different than a typical neighborhood. The courthouse redevelopment area plan, which was mentioned earlier in the prior discussion, started in 2008, and was based off the Economic Development Strategic Plan. And that plan acknowledged the, the strength of the courthouse area associated with government activity and the schools' activity, as well as the new hospital that was just being built. During that process, there was two facilitated workshops to get some more input about what the vision should be for the area, and the vision statement ended up coming out as this: Cultural, civic, work, shop, living, and recreational areas must be woven together with parks and streets to create a walkable and memorable town of Stafford, the seat of the county government. And when we looked at this area, we were also chained, charged with state law for creating urban development areas. Urban development areas were mixed-use, higher-density areas that could support transit, and state law required the county to do that. And the state, state gave us grant money to help envision what that might look like. So the county, working with our consultant in 2011, completed a plan that took into account the new interchange at exit 140 here. So that has changed the dynamic of, of the area and how it's going to be developed in the future. Is it going to be typical highway commercial, or do we want to view something different? And this was really where we started getting more focus on creating a downtown Stafford. That planning effort also in, created community workshops where we got input. And some of the themes from those workshops were more visual in nature. We want to see a quiet, tree-lined neighborhood with a town center, park, or historic focal point. We want to look a little bit like Fredericksburg or Old Town Alexandria, and some, maybe some parts of Ruston and Arlington. We want a place to provide options to get out of our car, where we could walk around on the downtown streets. We want to have community gathering places and coffee shops and areas where we're not just buying from chain stores, we're going to specialty shops and can buy really neat stuff and, and have a chance to sit down at a restaurant or a cafe outside and greet our friends. Also, looking at having the county have an entertainment center, a place where people are attracted to go to, to, to do something other than shop or, or work. And then the concept that we've heard a lot over the last five years or so is have a place that allows you to live, work, and play in the same location. And the idea is that that kind of community will attract young adults who are upwardly mobile. And also having a family-friendly oriented spaces, like we mentioned with the parks and, and restaurants and things, so people can feel safe when they're taking their kids out to go places. And then a destination offers attractions for people both living in and out of that area. And finally, most recently, our comprehensive plan, we envisioned the courthouse areas being one of our targeted growth areas, where we want to focus our attention on growth and development and have more of a control over its form and how it's going to look. And in 2012, the board, as part of our effort for the downtown Stafford, created the UD Urban Development zoning category, which is intended to provide higher-density, mixed-use type of development for our downtown Stafford.
So then in 2017, early 2017, around February timeframe, the board authorized the county administrator to move forward with hiring a development advisor, which we did. We hired the Stan Tech Group, their team, which includes Greystone, and also Rebel Financing. And they've been working on this project since then, they, we onboarded them back in November. They've spent a lot of time doing the data gathering and analysis piece, they've looked at all the studies that Jeff just referenced, they looked at the surrounding area in great detail, they spoke with all the local realtors and businesses associated and developers about what's working, what's not in this region. They've, they had a tour for, some of the board members went on the tour that we did for the metro, around the metro region. We went to Rockville, we went to Kentlands and a few others around the, around the district that just got a feel for what the board wanted to see in terms of a vision. They developed a design and framework and conceptual site plans that you saw at that briefing on the, on August 14th. And then the financial analysis piece, and then presented the findings to you all. The next part that we're currently in is the direction to implement and moving forward with developing a master plan. The consultant team did present the findings, as I stated, and they discussed the downtown vision with you all. And a summary of the findings for Stafford, especially for this location, were that Stafford in general, there are very limited locations to gather, recreate, shop, dine, all those things that Jeff referred to that the community wants to see. There are few true mixed-use, walkable developments in Stafford right now. Our land ownership of the parcel across the street, the 25-plus acres, plus or minus acres, in this key location near the highway interchange, the new interchange, adjacent to the existing government center and the hospital and all those things, is, is a great advantage. The buying power that we have, which was identified in the gap analysis that John will speak to in a minute, and then the great potential, overall, it's a great potential to develop a vibrant downtown development. Based upon the findings, the vision, and the tour, we also created a vision in terms of this process, and it's a little more specific. It's to establish a walkable, vibrant, authentic town center, provide amenities with pedestrian and bike access to connect the neighborhoods, acknowledge car-dependent realities. We know that this is a suburban county, so we have to acknowledge that reality, that people are dependent on cars. We want to make that access for cars there, but once they're here, they're in the walkable town center, they're parking in the designated areas. And to introduce a heart for the community, a single, a signature place that represents Stafford culture and values. And at this point, I'm going to have John speak a little bit about the market and gap analysis.
Hello, board, this is my first time presenting here, so which button, the right button?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. As you know, the consultant provided a information gap analysis, a study, the results were presented to you back in, at the workshop. And in summary, the studies suggest a strong market for a downtown Stafford. Now, let me expound on that a little bit, if I may. Again, I've been here 15 weeks, but what you may not know is I did my graduate work in community economics, specifically retail market analysis. So I was rather familiar with the analytics and the procedures they used to put this together. So I spoke to the consultant this morning, not because I doubted it, but more to confirm my own curiosity on how the analysis was done, the systems used, and I can verify to you that they used current, frankly, very robust modeling available on the marketplace, specifically tailored, of course, for, for this analysis. Now, the market and gap analysis showed this. It basically showed a significant, what we call leakage, in retail sales. Now, let me define those, if I may, for you and also the public, just a little bit. To do a market analysis, a retail market analysis, economists look at what are called potential sales, or what you might consider the expected sales of a place, in this case, the county. Potential sales are based on the population, their income, and consumer spending patterns based on the averages of the common citizen. So you look at the market, i.e. the county, and expect what it would spend on retail sales. That would be the potential sales of the county in this place. Now, because across the country, units of government collect taxes, taxes on retail sales, you can actually look at the actual sales. So then you compare the potential sales against the actual sales in a place or a community, in this case, the county. If potential sales are greater than the actual sales, then you have a leakage. That is, you expect people to buy more than they are, than is actually being spent in that place. Dollars are being spent outside that place. If you have potential sales that are less than the actual sales, then you actually have a place where people are spending more dollars than you would expect in that place, or in that community, or in that county. You are drawing people to that place. Now, in this case, the graph shows significant percentage of leakage. That is, on average, more dollars are being spent outside Stafford County in retail segments, in fact, every segment looked at, than one would expect. And I would say, from my experience, in some of these categories, a significant amount more is being spent outside the county than is being spent inside the county. In particular, I would point out four of the five top categories identified in this chart. Those are clothing and clothing accessories, sporting goods, hobbies, books, music, furniture and home furnishings, and miscellaneous store retail sales. I would exclude gasoline sales from what I'm about to state. Those four categories are generally what are considered experiential retail sales, or what's commonly being termed now in market analysis as retail tainment. That is, people, retail is not exactly dead. A lot of retail spending has gone online, as you know, but a lot of retail spending and the activity that takes place around retail activity is because people want to go to a place to see things, to look at things, perhaps buy things, to be entertained by the experience they have in the shopping. Those four categories I mentioned are generally, speaking, those types of categories. Those are things that people do and things that people buy that generally they want to be, they want to have an experience, a night out, an afternoon out, and maybe even a weekend. So again, the evidence shows that there is significant leakage in the retail sales in Stafford County. Now, that analysis, as I said, is, is based on consumer spending patterns, expenditure patterns, population and income. As you know, the median household income in Stafford County is above the average, above the median nationwide, and also in this particular region. I looked at some data this afternoon, now 2016 data, and I noted that Stafford's median household income is, was in 2016, the highest in the DC metro area. Now, higher, higher median income, along with the fact that retail sales are taking place outside this county, more than you would expect here, is evidence of, in fact, a retail gap. The table at the bottom of this chart shows that that gap is about 48% of the expected sales are being spent outside the county. So in summary, Stafford County, of course, is a, is a county with rapid population growth, a need of multifamily market and housing, particularly unique place-based housing. The data in this analysis shows that there are retail sales being spent, you would not, there are less dollars being spent here than you would expect. And in fact, a well-designed, place-based downtown development is well-positioned in Stafford County, according to this evidence.
So next, I just want to cover two questions that came up post-workshop from the board. The first one was, how will the proposed residential component of downtown, of the downtown Stafford plan support the retail establishments, the proposed retail establishments? Essentially, what's been proposed for retail is about 115,000 square feet in the downtown, that our phase, that first phase on our property. And in addition, there's about 700 new units of residential in multifamily in the true mixed-use style that we've talked about, that will be developed over two phases. Now, in the analysis that was given by Greystone at the workshop, it seemed like that wasn't going to be enough to hit the mark for what they said was needed to handle the residential, the retail at that level. But some of the things that weren't mentioned that I think is important is the location of this facility, these offices and the courts in proximity to the downtown, the foot traffic driven by that, in addition to the foot traffic and vehicle traffic driven by the hospital center across the street, and also the, the school department's administration buildings will all feed into this downtown. But I think even more importantly, there's approximately 1,250 units of residential currently within a 15-minute walking distance of where the proposed downtown Stafford will be, which will more than feed that in its, on its own. That's within 15-minute walking distance. Beyond that, there's even more, and any developer coming into this will look at not just- just those, but they'll look at the entirety of Embry Mill, they'll look at the entirety of Courthouse Square, and all the other nearby homes as the feeding for this downtown project. So the consultants feel very confident that the residential market is here and with the addition of what we're going to be developing here. The second major question that came up was that with the challenges that have been faced by both the Garrison and Acquahia Town Center in getting built, they're both mixed-use developments, how is downtown Stafford going to be different? So I wanted to spend just a few minutes talking about the difference of what we're talking about here. So here's a site plan for the Garrison as proposed. You'll notice all of the, all the buildings in yellow and blue are the retail and office uses, and the orange are the residential multifamily units. The, what you end up with, and I'll come back, you'll see that Travis Lane up the middle there, and the picture up in the right-hand corner there, that is this only block where there's any mix of use whatsoever, but that's retail and office. All of the residential is segregated from this development. That is not, and you'll notice all the parking surfaces all throughout this development, that is not what we're talking about for downtown Stafford. It's not that it won't be successful, it's just that that's a very different development model than what's being proposed here for downtown Stafford. It's a single-block, walkable, mixed-use, again, just office retail, surrounded by a very car-centered, segregated retail and multifamily. And there's some, from the developer, these are some of the renderings that they've provided. Acquahia Town Center, very similar. It's car-centered, segregated retail, the red and the blue are your retail and office, and the more yellow-orange color is the multifamily residential. This residential, by the way, is all income-restricted, which also affects the market and how they're going to feed into this retail establishment. And by the way, that retail...
Fred, if I could just point out, just so you know...
Yep.
That was, this was not the way that this was intended.
Understood.
It was supposed to be integrated, and there was no income restrictions envisioned. In fact, they bold-faced lied to us in a meeting up in conference room ABC when we asked them that same question. So I just wanted to be clear on that.
Yep, absolutely, yeah. I'm just going by what is currently on the table here.
Right.
Yep. And then there's some renderings of what they're proposing currently. Again, downtown Stafford is vertically mixed uses throughout the entire project. So you're going to have retail on the bottom, residential on top, maybe offices, residential, there's going to be a complete mix throughout this development, very walkable. All the parking, you'll notice, are all on the perimeter in parking structures and some on the outskirts. Everything on the internal is walkable. There are streets, but they're very walkable and pedestrian-friendly. A vibrant public realm comprised of a town square or public space, space yet to be determined, but these are all very different than what you see in both of those other developments, and in fact, different from some of the developments we looked at when we did the Again, going back to the vision, walkable, vibrant, authentic town center, amenities for pedestrians and bikes connected to the neighborhoods, and the car-dependent realities we understand, but then ultimately, it's building a heart for the community, which honestly, there's no development like that in Stafford, either existing or proposed. And that's why I think the, moving forward with such a development is, and as the development advisors have stated, they really see this as an amazing opportunity, given all the other areas they've done this work, and I think John made some statements as well. I've done this work too. I was former economic development director in Rhode Island, and I haven't seen a market and gap analysis like this before. It's, it's extremely promising. That combined with all the other positives that we have going for is with the existing complex here, I just think it's, it's a major opportunity. So again, the potential for growth is also substantial. That's one of the things that we did not see with the other ones, that we have all this area around us that has, there's a lot of underutilized or vacant properties now around the property that we currently owned that could grow, hopefully, with the expansion of this project. So just to kind of lay all those down for you, looking at those three projects, downtown Stafford, Acquahia, and Garrison, you can see in this chart, I'm not going to go through every line, but they're very different developments, is the key. So just because something's not working up there, one thing I'll note also is that in terms of major market competition for other retail, there's a lot of competition up on Garrisonville Road, and that would affect Acquahia and the Garrison. In this area, there's really not much at all currently. Embry Mill will be developing a piece in their retail section, but again, compared to what they're dealing with up at Garrison, it's, it's not even close. So next steps, we've talked about, we're going to, we're in the process now of working on the master plan for the county-owned land. We will develop and implement a community engagement plan to engage and get feedback from the residents and the area property owners. We're looking to amend that UD five zone to better accommodate exactly what we're talking about in terms of the density and the building requirements needed for an authentic downtown, and then to rezone the county property based upon that amended zoning to the UD five zone, and amend the comp plan as, as necessary. And then ultimately, what we're leading to is to develop and put out an RFP for public-private partner, development partner, and I'd be happy to entertain any questions for myself or John or Jeff.
Mr. Snelling.
Fred, I've already been contacted by some adjoining property owners, they want to file for rezonings. So I think if we can get meetings with those folks quickly...
Yes.
Because they're getting ready to file, and they need to know what this concept is.
Absolutely. In fact, John and I were having the conversation last week, and we're going to, we're putting together the list, we're going to work with Jeff to get the, all the names and contact information, we're going to reach out to them directly, try to set up meetings individually with all of them.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Presley or others?
Thank you.
Great job. All right. We do have some people that are sitting, waiting, I believe, for the stormwater discussion. So would the board members be okay if we switch the bylaws and the, so that'd be twenty-five and twenty-six?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four, twenty-five, thank you. Anybody opposed? Okay. So with that, we're going to move right along to discussion of stormwater management.
I guess I'll start off the discussion since I asked to put this on the agenda. This is not limited to my district. There was a study done in two thousand and five that took neighborhoods, not only Vista Woods, which is in my district, but a neighborhood in Ms. Bomke's district, and a neighborhood in Mr. Cohen's district. Some interesting things that came out of that particular study, some of them are items like the size of the pipes that are running under some of our roads should be increased. And what's disappointing is that an opportunity was lost here, because now we're getting ready to replace all the pipes in Vista Woods, and VDOT is telling us that they can't upsize the pipes as indicated is recommended within the study, because it's maintenance funds, and so we're just going to continue to add these pipes that are the wrong size as in accordance to this study. So, yeah, yeah. But more importantly, stormwater management is becoming increasingly more important. Again, these are people's homes, it's oftentimes their retirement, it's the single biggest investment that they're going to be making. We are limited in what we can do. We have already looked at things like a service district and, and state law does not, excuse me, state law does not allow us to do a service district for communities like Vista Woods, but I think we need to take a more comprehensive review at stormwater management. One of the things that kind of piques my interest is stormwater management when we do new plans. It's based upon they need to build for a ten-year storm. Well, we've had more than four ten-year storms in the last six months alone. One was a two-hundred-year storm, I'm told one was a thousand-year storm, and so if, if we've had four ten-year storms in six months, is the ten-year storm metric a valid one, especially when we're considering? So there's, there's a number of issues that I find incredibly concerning. I've, I've talked to Mr. Foley on a number of occasions, and I think we need to take a much more comprehensive look at stormwater management. There are some thoughts that, that, you know, are rolling around in my head, maybe a potential of a property-based code, but I would really like, and I think it's incredibly important, that we take a larger look at what we can do to help our homeowners protect themselves.
So Jason, did you have a presentation tonight? Okay, you're just here to answer questions. Okay. Mr. Cohen.
Thank you. I'm glad Mr. Maurer put it on the agenda at the, what's that called? Really? Thank you. At the VACO meeting, regional meeting the other week that several of us attended, many individuals raised the questions and the concerns about stormwater management. So I think, quite honestly, if the state code is not allowing us to do things, maybe the state code needs to be changed, and maybe we need to add that into our legislative packet, because we need to have the tools. One of my greatest concerns is that there are numerous communities that are older communities who have done what they're supposed to have done, and yet, because of other communities or the events, they're getting harmed, and it's not as though they have been negligent. And so I really believe we need to do something more than just say, well, you know, we can't do anything. I will commend staff. Jason has been phenomenal in going out, and, and other members of staff, going out to other communities, giving them ideas, trying to help them. Even though the state doesn't allow us to do a lot of things, our staff has really been proactive and tried to be helpful to the neighborhoods, which is really appreciative. Every community I've talked to has had a problem, they thank Jason in particular, but thank our staff, because they don't take an attitude of, well, we can't do anything. But I believe we really need to take a greater, more holistic approach on this and see what we can do, because quite honestly, it's not the homeowners' now's fault at this, and we need to acknowledge that and, and do something to help them.
So I'll just add that stormwater is probably been my single biggest issue since I've been on the board, and I do want to agree with Ms. Maurer and Mr. Cohen that our staff and Jason have been phenomenal in this area. We had a little town hall meeting in one of the developments up, that sits up against the railroad tracks last week, and we ended up doing a little walking tour, and thank goodness, we didn't get chiggers and poison ivy and everything else. But as it turns out, down behind CSX, there was a huge, enormous abutment, is that what you call it, that was sitting there blocking probably a third of the water channel that hasn't been used for years. Had we not walked down there, and of course, there were beaver, beaver dams too, but, you know, and the homeowners go out there and said they break up the beaver dams every other day. But the water was like the water Wendy's constituents described. They showed us pictures, and it just makes you want to cry. We've all had water in our basement over the years. Water is not fun. I grew up with water in the basement, and I said, I'll never, ever buy a house with water in, you know, where you have a basement, but, you know, we did it too. Everybody's got a shop vac, but it's not fun. And especially with what some of your constituents are dealing with and what some of mine are dealing with. You know, you can, because every time you go to your insurance company, you've got another deductible. And then I have a lot of people that are actually in a storm, or in these, the flood plane, the flood plane, that is expensive. So I'm, I'm glad you put this on the agenda. It is a, an issue. I mean, as Mr. Dayton created that whole long list, what, two years ago, where we wanted to go in and help people address some of their stormwater issues, and then, you know, the county attorney's office, rightfully so, said, you know, we, we can't do that because you're affecting things on people's personal property, on, on easements where we could potentially be liable. So that didn't work. So does staff, and do you have a recommendation, or has staff had any discussions and thoughts about this?
Madam Chair, we've had many discussions with you all and amongst ourselves. There's no question that this is not just a Stafford issue, it's really across the state and the country, frankly. And with aging infrastructure, it becomes that much more difficult. I think a real comprehensive look at this is, is important. I think you need to know the range of options that you have, and what some of the pros and cons of approaching things a certain way might be. So we're, we're certainly geared up to do some work to bring a more comprehensive look at this issue before you. I think that in Stafford County, in the past, there's been discussion about establishing a stormwater utility, which might be at one end of the spectrum, if you will, and establishing some new fees to help pay for it, because there's no question, this is a very expensive venture, retrofitting infrastructure and so forth. But I think, I think we need to look at the whole gamut of options and bring something back to you for consideration. In staff's review of your strategic priorities, that was actually an item that we thought you ought to consider adding to the strategic plan for consideration. All of those strategic issues get a comprehensive review of alternatives. So we're geared up to bring something back to you on this topic, and I think we'll have some good research. I think as we look at something that everybody else is facing, we ought to look at what everybody else is doing, and I think you'll see a range of, of options. So I appreciate the conversation. We're all on the same page about needing to do something. So we're going to bring some things before you as part of the strategic plan over the course of the next couple of months, and get some clear direction from you on where you'd like to go.
And I think the other component of that is, is finding out what the Virginia Association of Counties, what are they hearing from other jurisdictions as far as possible legislation that we might be able to propose and, and move forward?
We definitely will, we'll look at that. Changing design standards for stormwater facilities to meet a hundred-year flood instead of ten is a, is no small thing. It's not a, a thing that probably Stafford would do all by itself. So there's examples of where legislation or some lobbying might be important in this too. So we will cover that as a part of the comprehensive review, as well as the other comments that you all have identified.
Okay.
Bring something back to you with an outline.
All right. Does anybody on the board have any other additional comments in this department? Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay, we'll now go back to item number twenty-four. Discuss revisions to the Board of Supervisors' bylaws, county attorney. Ms. McLendon.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the Board, Rashida McLendon, County Attorney. Can I have the computer, please? Thank you. Today, we're here to talk about the Board's bylaws and revisions to the bylaws. The Board's bylaws were last updated in June of two thousand and seventeen. The bylaws themselves allow for revision by a two-thirds vote after a notice at a previous meeting. The Board constituted the bylaws committee, which involves Supervisor Maurer and Supervisor Dute and Heffer. They met twice, and they have recommended the following changes. First, starting with the order of business, the bylaws committee recommended incorporating into the bylaws that the afternoon session starts at three P.M. and the evening session starts at seven P.M. And I should make one note on these slides, the citations I provided are to the redline version, so if you're looking and following along, excuse me, from the board package materials, it's going to be the redline version. And also, the bylaws were updated to specify that items that are not heard in the afternoon session will carry over to the evening session. Next, moving on to the consent agenda, the, the bylaws are recommending that how items come to the consent agenda is better defined. Currently, there is not a definition, so that definition for consent agenda items are going to say that they are routine, non-controversial, and anticipated by unanimous approval. The items will make their way onto the consent agenda after being prepared by the county administrator, and this agenda is reviewed by the chairman and vice chairman at the It was defined in the bylaws as being proposed to have new business items come back by default as unfinished business. However, if there is no objection, they may come back on the consent agenda. It also clarifies that public hearings are not new business. Under the unfinished business section, which was added to the bylaws, it would clarify that items after unfinished business, or become unfinished business after they're new business, after they've been considered at a public hearing, or after being sent to a committee and returned to the Board, and we'll get into the committee discussion in a moment. It also clarifies that items coming out of closed session are not considered unfinished business.
Ms. McLendon, could you clarify that a little bit further for me? Does that mean we cannot take an action on an item coming out of closed session?
It's, it's to clarify that items that are only on the closed session agenda are not considered unfinished business because they have not been under new business on, in the Board in open session.
But if we wanted to take action on it, we could by virtue of the process that we have currently laid out, correct?
Actually, Supervisor Cavalier, I will get to closed session in one moment, and I think that will make it clear, but we currently don't have a process established for handling items coming out of closed session, and adding that into the bylaws, I think, will help and make it clear as well.
Great. Thank you. Thank you.
Moving on to the add-on section, we currently have add-ons, but this just defines what we're currently doing. Add-ons will be items that are not part of the published agenda, and add-ons can be added to the consent part when appropriate, if they meet that definition, and add-ons can also be added under new business, when they fit that definition. Also, there was a note added to require add-on materials to be made available to the public during the Board meeting, and this would be on the table in the back of the room or through the updated online agenda. And moving to closed session, Supervisor Cavalier, in clarifying your question. First allows the Board to go into closed session at any point. If something comes up and the Board members need advice, the bylaws just recognize what you could already do, is motion to go into closed session. The second point allows the Board to come out of closed session and to vote on specific items. So currently, that's not permitted in your bylaws, so you would have to waive your bylaws and then take up a vote. This provision would allow the Board to vote on two specific items. It would be personnel items or legal items that are about probable or actual litigation. Outside of those two items, the Board would have to deem an item a time-sensitive and then take a vote coming out of closed session.
Okay, Ms. Mauer?
And the reason for this is there are times when we are discussing somebody's contract. We don't want to add that to new business. We don't want to delay taking action on that. So that was the reason that we added those two items, without having to waive the, get two-thirds of waiving the bylaws, doing that extra step. So there was, and there are a number of times where we have talked about personnel issues inside closed session, and then the whole process of having to waive the bylaws and take action on that seemed a little bit excessive, because it will never hit, it will never hit new business.
Right. Okay.
There are a few other changes, and I should note that this is the committee section. I'm going to go over this briefly. I believe the county administrator has a more in-depth discussion for you about committee structure in a moment. But the Board at its strategic planning session decided that it wanted to look at and potentially revamp the committees and how they're used. The bylaws committees have not reviewed these changes, and they're not recommending these changes. I also want to make that very clear. The chairman and vice chairman were given the authority to meet with staff, and from there, these changes you're getting ready to see, or you see currently in front of you, were incorporated. The vice chairman and chairman recommended that more items come to the Board as a whole via work sessions. And by doing that, it would likely mean a reduction, or really a decrease, in standing committees. I would note that standing committees are not currently listed in the Board's bylaws, so there was nothing to remove. It's just a practice. So what we have in front of you would establish the Legislative Affairs Committee as the only kind of regular committee of the Board, and I think it's because they serve a special function and an ongoing function. Beyond that, it would allow the chairman to create ad hoc committees as needed, and these would basically be subject matter-based committees, and the Board would actually be the body to task those committees with their assignments. And also move some committee chairman provisions of the bylaws section to this section, and those were the ones that we have with regards to the Board Chairman serving as committee chairman and similar items like that.
Okay, so if we wanted to look at ad hoc committees that we've kind of had, but we didn't really call them that, let's say this year, would be...
I can't think of this year, but last year, we had the sign committee. The sign committee has been an ad hoc committee of the Board, and that's been subject matter-based, where members delved into the sign ordinance and revamping that.
Okay, what about Ms. Mauer, Mr. Dudenheffer, on the growth management?
Working group.
Working group. Oh, that's just called a working group?
No, that is not a Board-established committee.
Okay. Thank you.
So as I said, the county administrator has a more in-depth discussion for you in a moment, but I will say that out of this discussion grew some additional changes that we saw with the bylaws. You have been having work sessions, and we thought it was appropriate to define work sessions, and the new bylaws would do that. It has work sessions being provided to the Board to give you an opportunity to meet with staff and to delve into complex issues and discuss solutions and alternatives, and to give staff direction. These work sessions would follow all state open meeting laws, because they are meetings of the Board, and we also added in the provision that no formal votes or actions would be taken during a work session, because it's a work session. And even if the Board decides to revamp the committee structure outside of what we just discussed, adding the work session provision in your bylaws would still be advised. And I will touch on one other thing, a couple other things, but very quickly from the committee. In our discussions, we talked about a few other things that are typically related to the bylaws. The first is the code of performance. The code of performance is generally adopted by the Board and looked at really just to hold a standard of performance for the Board members. It's not required, and the Board last adopted a code of performance, I believe, in September of 2017. The committee decided not to advise putting this in the Board's bylaws, but to have it to come to the Board annually for consideration. So you do have a draft code of performance for 2018 in your agenda materials, if you're so inclined. The next item to come before the Board was a request with regards to the statement of economic interest. These are the forms that you fill out annually. They are FOIA-able forms. They are public documents, and some localities have gone an additional step and placed those documents on their websites for ease and transparency. Like I said, they are subject to FOIA, and this means that staff won't have to produce the documents every time they're created. So the committee has brought this forward to the Board, and this would simply just require some Board direction, if the Board would like to follow in this policy or in this procedure. And the last item to touch on was the Freedom of Information Act policy. There was a request, number one, to make this policy more visible for the Board, or for the public, and so you will now see that the link is on the front of the county's webpage. It's easily accessible. There was also a request to add the FOIA Council's contact information to the policy, and upon further review, we realized it was actually already in the policy. It's right there underneath our FOIA contact information for our FOIA agent, so that's already there, so there's no other action required on this particular matter from the Board. And with that, I would turn it over to the county administrator to talk about the committee structure, or answer any questions if the Board has them.
Marcia, if you could pull up the last attachment. I will say, Madam Chair, that I think the Board has had some discussion about this among yourselves, and even at meetings. All that staff did was prepare a document for discussion, which I think you all have had a chance to take a look at. It is a document that came out of the strategic planning retreat, when there was a lot of discussion about whether we should continue with committees and some of the concerns that Board members had about the current process. There were Board members on both sides of this. There seemed to be a majority that felt like some changes were necessary. So this document was put together to sort of outline the issues, rather than me doing some presentation on it. I will say that the items at the top are the issues that came up during the discussion among Board members that need to be addressed, and they could be addressed in different ways. We could revise the committee process as it currently stands and clarify some things, or we could go to a work session format, which I think Board members have discussed as well. So, Madam Chair, I really turn it back over to the Board for discussion, and I would certainly be glad to answer any questions. I will say that a little caution here is if you don't go to the proposal of the chair and vice chair, and decide to revise the committee structure itself, there are some pretty significant questions here that may be difficult to address in a committee structure, or we could set up some detailed charges of committees and things like that, and some of that may be appropriate, some may be more complicated than you want with the committees. But those are all the issues before you in this document.
Okay, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Foley or for Ms. McLendon? Okay, so we're here to discuss, discussion from Board members. Yes, Ms. Mauer?
Okay, so a couple of concerns that I have with getting away with it, or getting rid of the committee system altogether, and under Section 2-B, where we create these ad hoc committees and send issues down to the ad hoc committees, and in, no disrespect to you, Madam Chair, but everything is centered at the chairman, vice chairman, and not this Board, but previous Boards, that became problematic.
Correct.
And so, not this Board, Madam Chair. And so that gives me a little bit of pause, where these committees are just being appointed by the chair and the vice chair, but more importantly, I think that the committees add a significant amount of value. However, I too am concerned with the transparency of the committees themselves. And so, a couple of thoughts that I've discussed one-on-one with some of my Board members, is if agenda items always come to the Board first and get assigned to the committees. That way, the public knows that those agenda items are being assigned to a particular committee. We don't have to create these ad hoc committees every time an issue needs to be looked at in depth. So that might help with items coming to the committees first, because one thing I've noticed is that developers have utilized the committee system to add their issues into the committees that don't hit the agenda and the public at first, and things are being kind of decided at the committee level, that I'm not certain, that the public should know about first. So I agree that every item should come to the Board first and assigned to a committee, so that's how items would get on the agenda. And then, we could also choose to, at a work session, I do like the provision for the work session, because there are certain items, for example, you know, determining the percentages in the CIP process. All seven Board members are incredibly interested in that. That would be appropriate for a work session. But, so I would like to propose that we keep the committee structure. However, we change the way items are assigned to the committee structure, and instead of it starting on a committee and coming up, it should come from this Board and be pushed down. And that way, we can still do a lot of that in-depth analysis, and should an item be of interest to all seven Board members, a work session be proposed. So it leaves it to this Board on where it gets, and the Board as a whole, where these items get distributed, but more importantly, they're heard from the public first.
All right. Others. Mr. Snellings.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, the committee system, I've been critical of it, not because it doesn't work, because it does work. Works quite well. My main criticism is one of the issues that Ms. Mauer just raised. The other is, we're holding those committee meetings in a room that held 34 people. That's it. And probably about 24 of those slots are taken up by staff and us. So I'd like to see any future committee systems, committee meetings, if we continue with the committee system, to be held here, in this room. That way, the public would know what's coming, because we're going to, this Board will assign it, and they would know that every second Tuesday, noon, and again at 1:30, there'll be a committee meeting right here. That will have plenty of room. We may even discuss at some point, depending on cost, if actually televised. And I don't know what that cost would be, but I could support some compromises, but I certainly can't support the current system we have, because I do not think, in my opinion, that it's transparent. It needs to have more openness. Thank you.
Mr. Cavalier?
So, I do support the current committee system, but I'm willing to entertain the changes that have been suggested, both the one about that this Board will farm things out to the committees, just like we send things down to the Planning Commission, and then we get feedback that way. But we determine what goes, and it doesn't all bubble up. And then I do like Mr. Snellings' suggestion that we have the meetings right here. This is our chamber, and, you know, it seats a lot more people and can be televised, if it can be accommodated, so I don't have a problem with that. I, you know, I was on the Board when we didn't have a committee system, and then, when I came back to the Board, we did, and I didn't think it was a good idea at first, but you know what? I think it's the most efficient way of getting things done, because the people who are interested in those topics can go to all those committees and participate as much as possible. There's no formal votes taken such that they're binding. There are only referrals to the entire Board, so, you know, it operates a lot like the Planning Commission. They make recommendations to us based upon what we ask them to do, and this would be very much like that structure, and I think that that can work.
All right. Ms. Shelton?
I like the committee structure from the idea that it segments the work that we have to do, so it's a little bit more organized. I think that's really valuable. Mr. Snellings, I definitely like the idea of bringing them here and bringing in that transparency that we want. I know we overuse the word transparency, but we really want to be able to give our users, our users, whatever, I'm sorry, citizens, you're not users, give our citizens the capability of being able to participate in this process. But I would like us to consider another addition, is that I think it's valuable to be able to vote. And so I would like, if, when we have these structures and we set it up and we segment our work, but give us all the ability to vote in on those, on each one of those committee meetings, rather than just three people. And the reason is, is I've seen meetings, and I've been on ones, where things have been shut down by those committees and not come to the Board, when perhaps, if we'd had all seven of us, we would have felt differently. And so it's not the things coming up, it's the things that don't come up.
Okay. Mr. Cohen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. A couple of things, being relatively noon, but have watched many, many years of meetings, I understand the desire for the committee structure. My concerns with it, and I really am very pleased with Ms. Mauer's offer, because it shows respect for both the people who have concerns and the people who like the status quo. So I think that that was, it's excellent, that it shows respect for people. One of the big, great concerns was the impact on staff, because there have been times when we have had three, maybe four, presentations by staff in the course of a whole day, or in just for, we had the Friends of the Repahanet come, they did a nice presentation, and everybody said, "Hey, why don't they come at night?" So they end up coming, doing it twice. And quite honestly, we asked a bunch of questions in the afternoon that made us look really interested in their topic, but then, when we hear it again, two weeks later, we don't ask questions, which people think we're not caring. So I think that that will help with that issue. I also have concern with so many things on the consent agenda, and then it's bang, it's done. And I think we do need some transparency, so people know some of the meat on these issues. The one issue, and this doesn't address it, and I hope that we will eventually, is I think there are just way too many committees that deal with the school system. You have the chair, voice chair, we have a three-on-three, we've got a FAB that theoretically meets with their FAB, there's oversight. I just think we need to streamline that to make it clear, and it will help them in understanding where things are coming from, rather than different messages going forward. So I hope we'll address that at some point, but I really thank Ms. Mauer for her effort on this, because I think it's a good step forward.
All right. Gary, do you have something?
So I guess I've been on the Board for five years, and my biggest issue is that I don't think that the public sees all the business that we're doing in our committee I like the committees, because we get a lot of business done back in the committee in ABC, and anybody is welcome to come to all, any and all of our meetings. However, I feel like we need to be more out in front, and maybe it needs to be in these Board chambers, and maybe it does need to be televised, because that's really where the bulk of our work is happening. And I think our residents need to see, and we need to participate as a Board, and that's why I'm actually for the work sessions, because I feel it's important for every Board member to be a part of whatever that matter is that we're discussing. And the reason I feel really strongly about that is because when new Board members come on, and you're not on certain committees, you kind of don't feel like an equal, that there's no parity, even though when all seven of us sit up here, we are equal colleagues. But when you're on a committee as a new Board member, you feel like you're not an equal at that point in time. And so if you're not on a certain committee, and then that item gets recommended to the Board as a new member, that train has already left the station by the time it gets to the Board for that, the vote of the Board. So it's very difficult, in my mind, to stop and ask questions and to kind of stop the momentum, if you will, of that train. So I feel for the betterment of new Board members that are coming on, because new means change, and it means new opportunities for everybody. And we all want to be heard. That's what it's all about. So, I don't know. I'm really in favor of doing work sessions, and I think if we do work sessions, they need to be televised as well. I just feel like... I just feel like we, everybody has something to say, and I really, really like the idea of doing work sessions. And when you look at our consent agenda, I mean, it's so long because of all the business that we've done in ABC. So I like all the work that Ms. McLendon has done, and Mark, and Wendy, and I appreciate all your efforts here. But I still have some concerns. I appreciate your kind of compromise. If that's the will of the board, and we decide to do that kind of compromise structure, I would recommend we maybe do a pilot program for nine or ten months, see how it's working, come back, maybe revisit the issue, and then go forward from there. But I think that's one of the reasons that we don't have a lot of people at our meetings, because I don't, because we do so much of our business up in ABC, and I think we need to include the community more. But that's my two cents.
Mr. Cavalier.
See, I don't agree with that at all on the work sessions, because under the proposed structure that you came up with, the work sessions would be run by you and the chairman, whoever the chairman is at the time. All the ad hoc committees would be created by whoever the chairman is at the time. So there is no distribution of power at all. It all resides in one chair. And we've had some issues with that in the past. Let me just term it that way. And I'm not directing this toward you, Madam Chair, at all. I'm just saying, the person who sits in that chair would wield a lot more power under the system you're proposing than the distributed system within the committee system that we have right now. And I've seen it both ways. And I've seen it all happen in eighteen years, or sixteen years, I don't know how many years I've been up here, I've lost track by now. But it happens. It's reality, and it happens, and I've seen it firsthand. So I won't support that at all.
See, and I think that that goes back to people's personalities, but that's, but I hear what you're saying, and I hear your concerns.
Yeah. So, Ms. Shelton.
I'm sorry to add one more thing to it. You guys, or maybe you don't know, one of my concerns about this was, and I'm going to go back to the CIP process it went through. I'm the new board member, right? And so I really appreciate your comments about that, because part of that learning process is that I have to go to every meeting. I don't care what kind of meeting it is, whether it's the PRTC, whatever, whatever meeting that is, even if I'm not on that board, I have to go to them. And so I had a misunderstanding at the beginning that we, that all of the information that was given in those meetings, and all the decisions that were made by those meetings were not decisions by the board, that everything would come up to us to be decided. And so what happened, and that was timing, and I understand that, but what had happened, and why I like the work sessions, was a decision was made at a fab meeting right before this meeting that completely changed the vote. And so, and it was like, now suddenly we're getting a new spreadsheet. And so that was challenging. And so maybe it's a behavior issue, is that if we, and that's why I'm supporting, I like the structure, I like the idea of having it. I understand what you're saying, Mr. Cavalier. I hadn't considered that, because I think that's important, too, about distributing that power. And so maybe we think about some way to do that, but I would really, really like to have the ability to weigh in. If I need to be at every one of those meetings, okay, so be it. I just didn't know that. But I want to be able to vote. I want to be able to make some decision, and not just be, you know, a little rock sitting in the meeting, if that makes sense. So I won't keep saying that. And maybe there's, we have too many committees. I have no idea.
Madam Chair, I'm as a county attorney to look at that. I mean, I'm not sure we would be allowed to take a formal vote in a work session or in a committee meeting.
Supervisor Snellings, actually, you cannot have a committee that's the majority of the board. So voting members of a committee are limited to three. It's a FOIA regulation by the state.
My apologies, everyone. I did not know that.
Madam Chair, if I could just add one thing. I'm the old guy on the board now, but I, at one time, believe it or not, I was the newbie on the board. And I had to suffer through all the same things that you're going through. And I'm, it's just the way it is. You have to go through the process. I don't know how to explain it any other way, but most elected bodies in this country have a committee system that feeds information to the main body. You look all the way down from Congress to, you know, state legislatures, to county and city governments. It's just the way it works, because if it didn't work, people wouldn't do it. And people aren't throwing that baby out. So it must work. And it's just a matter of, you can go to any committee meeting that you want, and no, you can't vote at every one of those. Only three people can vote because of the constraints we're under, but you can provide all the input you want, and those votes coming out of committee meetings are only recommendations anyhow. So what does it really matter?
Okay. With that, let's see, we do have closed session, and I'm wondering, yes. So what is the, what is the pleasure of the board?
We've discussed committees, and I wanted to get a sense of where the board is on the committee system, but I also have a question on consent agenda.
Okay.
Yes. So there are some other issues that I have on these bylaws.
Okay. What page are you on now?
I am on page five of twelve, section three point two, the consent agenda. And we used to have, and this provides a little less clarity for me. And one of the reasons is, is this becomes very personal for me, because an item was tried to be placed on the consent agenda that had no business being on the consent agenda. And I understand, routine in nature, non-controversial, including routine, or non-controversial add-on items. I get all that, and I understand all that. However, how it's determined to be routine and non-controversial is left to the chair and the vice chair. And so I'm not entirely comfortable with that, and I would like some examples of what routine and non-controversial are, which we had before, such as appointments to county boards and authorities, acceptance of grants from federal or state agencies, the acceptance of property or ratification with the purchase. I liked those examples in there because they were very specific, but we need to have some sort of provision in here that controversial means one board member is throwing a hissy fit.
Right. So, I mean, I kind of agree with you that I don't think that should be the chair and the vice chair.
Well, the way it's written.
Right. I see that, and I see the way we used to do it. And we used to put a lot more things on the consent than we are doing now.
Right.
So, and of course, you can always pull something off the consent, but I kind of agree, I agree with you there.
So, but if you pull it off the consent, you still vote on it that same day. It doesn't go into new business and then unfinished business. So if we're pulling it off of consent, it doesn't automatically go to new business.
Correct.
And nor that do I want it to go to new business every time.
Correct.
So if there was some language meaning non-controversial means that, some sort of way where a single board member having an issue with it then makes it controversial, and it goes to new business. I just don't want the definition to be left up to the chair and the vice chair.
Does that make any sense?
Madam Chairman and Supervisor Maurer, it does. It also specifies that it should anticipate it for unanimous approval. I think we were trying to reach that. And actually, the county administrator has the first stab at the consent agenda by actually producing the agenda, and then it's reviewed by the chairman and vice chairman. So we did try to incorporate some measures in there. I will also say that in looking at our pre-localities, it's not typical to list specific items. We can add these back in, but the list wasn't exhaustive, and the question before was whether it was inclusive or exclusive. And there was many items that the board considered that weren't on these lists, so it became kind of practice of what we include and don't include.
So my concern with that is, as a board member, I don't get to see the agenda or what goes on to the consent agenda until the draft agenda is published. So county administrator takes a stab, they agree to it, I, as a board member, and let's just be honest, it's a quiet town center issue is where I'm going on this. And in this definition, our chairman at the time, who was very supportive of it, could have said, well, it's non-controversial, even though there were like four thousand emails that, you know, kind of indicated that it wasn't. It's still, according to this, the power would still ride with the chair and the vice chair. And I don't get an opportunity to see that draft agenda until after it's sent to us.
I understand your concern, Supervisor Maurer. I will also note just normal parliamentary procedure about overriding the chairman with a vote of the board, a majority vote of the board. So there are other mechanisms for protections in place, but if there's specific language that you would like incorporated, we can work to include that if it's the will of the board.
Okay. I appreciate that. It's just...
Okay. So with that, we will see this item back at our next meeting on the eighteenth.
Yes.
All right. Okay. And with that, we do need to get into closed session, so I will have Mr. Snellings read us in.
A resolution to authorize closed meeting whereas the board desires to hold a closed meeting.
A resolution to authorize closed meeting whereas the board desires to hold a closed meeting for consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members regarding the Department of Justice investigation, and the establishment of cemeteries, and the Stafford County Circuit Court, which are specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by counsel. And whereas pursuant to Virginia Code two point two dash three seven one one eight eight, such discussions may occur in closed session. So moved.
Cast your vote. Tally the vote. We are now in closed session. Thank you. All right. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay. Cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion carries six to one. All right. With that, we will start the seven o'clock Board of Supervisors meeting. If you could please stand. Have Ms. Shelton will be doing the prayer, and Mr. Snellings will lead us in the pledge. Thank you.
Thank you. Dear Heavenly Father, we welcome you to, into our lives today, and ask you for the guidance, wisdom, and support that we need to begin this meeting, and help us to engage in meaningful discussion with peace and love to all our constituents and ourselves. Fill us with your grace, Lord God, as we make decisions that might affect everyone. And continue to remind us that all that we do here today, all that we accomplish, is for the pursuit of truth and the greater glory of you. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So welcome to the evening session of the September fourth meeting of the Board of Supervisors. Let's see. We now have presentations by the public. If you'd like to comment, please remain courteous and respectful to members of the audience and to the board. If you could please keep track of your time, that would be appreciated. You are allowed three minutes to speak. Speak slowly and clearly into the microphone, and begin by stating your name and address. Please refer to the light on the podium to monitor your time. Green indicates the start, yellow means that you have one minute remaining, and red means that you need to summarize your comments. And I do not have any, oh, I take that back. I have one speaker card tonight. That is Dan Collins. That's you. Please come to the podium.
I'm not sure if this is the right venue, but I thought I'd come to you guys and see if I could get some help.
Okay.
I've been a resident of Stafford since nineteen ninety-one, and I've...
And your address, please?
Thirty Shirley Lee Court. I'm in Mr. Snellings' district.
Okay.
And I'm trying to get some help with some stuff in our neighborhood. I built my first house there in 'oh-two, sold it in 'oh-four, and built another house right beside it. And since then, I've been trying to get high-speed internet, our roads paved, another road put into the secondary road system, all with practically zero help. And so I was hoping that someone here would be able to direct me to try to help, because we're to a point, we've waited and waited and waited, that we're going to just sell and move to another county. So I'm not sure if I'm at the right place, but that's what we're trying to do. I have a private Essex easement that comes right off of Monroe Farm, and that we take care of. It was built to state road regulations, and when it was first put in, I wanted to get it introduced into the secondary road system so the state could take it over, because the school buses turn around on it six times a day. Not a problem, but we would like to do that. I had contacted Mr. Snellings back the beginning of the year a couple times, and the last response I got was that it would cost several hundred thousand to do so, and I don't know how that could be, because it needs to be brought up to state regulations. Well, it's already built to state regulations, so I'd like to have a more defined answer on that, and also something about the easements. Well, there's already easements there, so I'd like to talk about that, and also find out about high-speed internet, because it's just killing us where we're at. Is there anything you guys can help me with that?
We're not really in a position to do back-and-forth discussion.
Okay.
But I'm sure Mr. Snellings would be more than happy to chat with you.
Mr. Collins, you call me tomorrow. You still have my number?
I do. I've emailed you.
Yeah. Give me a call tomorrow, unless you and I get together.
Okay.
And I'll show you what the state has given me.
Okay. And our road, is there anything with our road?
I'll show you what the state has said.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight. Would anyone else in the board chambers like to address the board?
A little bit to set up. Hello, and thank you very much for letting me speak. My name is Deborah Snyder, and I've been living in Stafford County in Vista Woods at eight Visco Court since nineteen eighty-nine. And I just wanted to thank Mr. Snellings for the report you generated this afternoon, but I was unable to stay to hear you on affordable housing. The thing is, I've been involved with Virginia organizing on affordable housing, because now my daughter and granddaughter moved back here from San Diego since 2013, and they were not able to afford a place to live here. So that's how it started, and I would like very much, I have a report, it's written. So, and I would like very much to submit that. But what Mr. Snellings' report, with his report, I realize that we don't have to do the work that was done ten years ago by the Affordable Housing Task Force, but now we have to change our strategy. Just change it, go out of the box. And I would like very much to return, be a little more articulate in this, because I've just been scanning the first few pages of the report. Just one more thing. The Alice report that was cited in the, this one hundred and twenty-two-page report is, was written in 2016 for Virginia, published last year, a year ago, 2017 in August. And they found that for a family of four, you need eighty-one thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight-dollar household median income to be able to survive, make ends meet, and not incur debt. And that is, that is my principal concern, and thank you very much for letting me speak.
Thank you, ma'am. If you have any handouts, you can give them to Ms. Hollenberger, and she can certainly circulate those to the board.
I have one.
Is there anybody else in the board chambers that would like to address the board?
Yes.
With that, we'll close the public comment, the general comment. We have one public hearing tonight, and that's to consider an ordinance to amend and re-adopt fees for providing public water and sewer service and prorata fees. Let's see. Mr. Towery. So this is public hearing item number twenty-six.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, good evening. Jason Towery, Director of Public Works. Jason Towery, Director of Public Works. So just talk briefly about prorata and a little bit of the history. This has been a program that's been successfully being implemented in Stafford County since the 90s. Just a word real quick about prorata. Effectively, there's a very wordy definition here, but what it really comes down to is finding a way for growth to pay for growth. So when a new development comes into the community, there's often a need for expanded water and sewer facilities. And so prorata is the mechanism that the utility uses to fund those improvements. It is based on state code, Chapter 15, and it does require what we would call the General Water and Sewer Improvement Program. So about two, three months ago, I can't remember the exact date off the top of my head, I apologize, but the board recently passed the master plan, updated master plan, which last occurred a little over 10 years ago. And what that did is that triggered a process for staff to go back and look at updating the General Water and Sewer Improvement Program. And then from the General Water and Sewer Improvement Program, we generate fees that are used to establish the prorata fees, or rather, cost estimates that we use to establish the prorata fees. Really, the General Water and Sewer Improvement Program should be updated on an annual basis or at least semi-annually, or, I'm sorry, biannually. It had not been done in quite some time, so this was also an opportunity for us to make sure that our prorata rates were in line with the changes to the master plan. Prorata fees are based on what we would term a build-out scenario. Again, the master plan does look at the build-out needs for water and sewer improvements in various areas around the county, of course, within the urban service area. Basically, what we do is we calculate the total build-out demand for water or sewer, and we get a total gallons that are required for a certain service or for a certain area. And then we look at the total cost to expand the facilities to make it capable of, you know, delivering that service. We take the total cost, we divide it by the number of gallons, and we get a cost per gallons, and then that's divided up per equivalent dwelling unit. So when a developer comes in and wants to build 100-home development, he has a cost per dwelling unit that he is responsible to cover for those prorata fees for water and for sewer. And that's how we establish the prorata fees. Since the last prorata fee evaluation, we have noticed a couple of different changes that are affecting this current evaluation of the fees. One, the build-out water and sewer demands down. We talked about this during the master plan. Some of the changes that were there with some of the low-flow toilets and things of that nature that we're seeing, we've actually had fairly flat, if you will, demands, but we continue to see a growth of about 2% to 3% of our overall accounts. So we are bringing on more and more customers, but we're not seeing the demands historically as high as they were, say, 10, 15, 20 years ago. And then, but construction costs do continue to escalate about 20% to 30% since 2007, so that's also reflected in these updated fees. The county has five water pressure zones and eight sewer sheds. These are what we use to divide out how the fees are applied around various portions of the county. So the fees in, say, the Rock Hill area may be different from the fees down in the Falmouth area, depending on which water pressure zone or sewer shed the development is located in. In some cases, of course, some sewer sheds or some water pressure zones are more developed than others. And so what you would see in those cases is that if the infrastructure is more built out, typically the prorata fees to expand the facilities in those areas are lower, because most of the infrastructure is already there. And in other areas, as we were discussing earlier, infrastructure committee, such as around Centerport, where there is little to no infrastructure right now, the fees are much higher. And just again, a quick word here about the General Water and Sewer Improvement Program. There are two things that we're asking the board to do tonight. One is to adopt the General Water and Sewer Improvement Program. So we've made modifications to that based on the master plan. So again, the master plan that the board approved back earlier this summer. And then the General Water and Sewer Improvement Program is that mechanism we use then to develop the construction costs based on the master plan, and then we set the fees. And that's the second thing that we're asking the board to consider tonight, is setting the fees. Both the General Water and Sewer Improvement Program and the fees were presented to the Utilities Commission, and they recommended, I believe unanimously, actually recommended the adoption that we're bringing before you tonight. These are the proposed fees, the changes there. On the left, of course, are the current ones marked through, and then the proposed rates. As you can see, on the water side, they're fairly consistent. At least there's not as much of jumps as there are in some cases on the sewer side. We actually have a few on the sewer side that have dropped due to build-out that has already occurred in those certain areas or modifications to the demands that are now in those areas. And I would be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Questions for Mr. Towery.
I do.
Ms. Mauer?
So the ones are really easy to follow on the water, but how do you group those on the sewer? Do we have a map? I don't think I saw a map.
Yes, actually, I think you should have a handout that has, it does not have the map, I'm sorry, we don't have the map in front of you tonight. We can get you a copy of the map. It is available on our website. But typically, the pressure zones, again, yes, as you pointed out, the Acquahia Pressure Zone, Berea, those are typically more logical or at least conclusive in terms of the area of the county that you're looking at. The drainage areas that we look at and the sewer pressure zones are based off of drainage sheds, so they're typically tied to a creek name, if you will. So of course, Acquahia, Austin Run, those are up in the northern part of the county. Of course, Little Falls Run and Falls Run, Rocky Pen, those are down in the southern part of the county. Potomac Creek is in the central part of the county. And Acakeek, of course, is kind of just a little north of Potomac Creek. I think I covered them all there. But there is a map available online as well, associated with that.
Other questions? Mr. Snellings?
Jason, I'm a, I use county water. Is this going to affect my water bill?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Prorata means developer. Okay. All right, thank you.
Sure.
So we have an ordinance, and we have a resolution. First, we have a resolution R18...
Open the public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. At this point in time, I'll open the public hearing. Do we have people from the public that would like to address this item? Okay, seeing none, we will close the public hearing, and I'll bring this back to the board. I have resolution R18-116. Is there a motion? Ms. Shelton?
So moved.
Oh.
Exactly. I'll second.
Thank you. I have a motion and I have a second. Any discussion?
I do have one question. Are we going to be, it says that we're required to update this annually. Are we going to be updating this annually as opposed to waiting, what was it, 28 years?
10, yes.
10?
Yes, that's the plan moving forward. And part of the reason the last couple, last few years we've been waiting, the master plan process took a little while longer to get through than we thought. But yes, moving forward, the GSWIP, if you will, the General Water and Sewer Improvement Program, we'd like to take a look at annually and make sure we're reflecting current construction costs, and then be able to make those modifications to the fees as necessary.
Okay.
Okay, any other discussion? We have a motion and a second. All right, cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, now we have the ordinance. Okay, ordinance 018-39.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve...
I think Mr. Cavalier beat you.
He beat me, yay.
He beat you, but you can second it.
Yes.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, cast your vote for 018-39. Tally the vote. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. We are going to go back into closed session. Mr. Snellings is going to read us back in.
Whereas the board desires to hold a closed meeting for consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members regarding the Department of Justice investigation and the establishment of cemeteries, whereas pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-371188, such discussions may occur in closed meeting. So moved.
Second, a motion?
Say the motion.
Oh, second, okay. Any discussion? All right, cast your vote. Tally the vote. Okay, we are, the board is now in closed session. Second, to certify our closed session. Any discussion? Okay, with that, cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes unanimously. The September 4th meeting is hereby adjourned. Thank you.